We'll begin with the invocation led by Vice Mayor Smith, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by City Council member Andrew Roberto. Please rise as you're able.
Tonight we gather to debate the best for our city. We ask for the focus to listen well, the patience to hear fully. We pray for the humility and wisdom to identify the best path forward and the strength to see it through. Be with us all this evening who wish to do the best for our city. Amen.
Please stand as you're able and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilman Fugge.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas. All members present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from your last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be Are there any items to be postponed? Vice Mayor Smith? No? Anybody? Any items to be postponed? Okay. All right. Are there any items requested to be added by motion? Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request to add one item by motion, to add an emergency ordinance appropriating community improvement funds to community organizations and agencies. I think Mr. Johnson notified all of council that this would happen, and I think the detail is in a packet on there, in front of them. So I'll make a motion to add that.
Okay. Motion has been made to add an item regarding 202 funds. It's been made and seconded. Councilmember Parker to discuss that motion.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is a motion I'm not able to support. There was an application that was left out of the review that's been pending for more than three months now. And I believe all of that can be wrapped up this week and get on our next agenda in two weeks.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Smith?
I would just add that that single item can be addressed in the next council meeting if you'd like. It's my understanding that there was applicant who did not submit the appropriate paperwork and was notified two weeks ago of this. So it's my understanding that all the other applicants that are part of the community development funds all provided the necessary paperwork and are ready to be approved.
Yeah, this has been going on since May, and there has been additional materials needed from the applicant. However, part of the issue is also with communication and our limited staffing that we have in the council office currently. And so little notification was given. And so instead of postponing them three months, also so that other council members can allocate their funds. I haven't allocated my funds this time around either. I think it would be better than to delay this applicant three months, which is what happened last time. That's our normal process. And also to have an opportunity. So that's the reason that I'm not able to support it.
Just a point of information, to add items by motion takes a unanimous vote. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to bring this back to the next council meeting if necessary. We're not going to ask every other organization that submitted their paperwork on time to delay their funding for three months. So happy to bring it back next time if necessary.
Okay. I guess we can, yes. Mr. Johnson?
I will note the deadline for the next agenda is next Monday at noon. So.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Ryder.
It's okay. I did it to people during the airboard. You can't see things. Do we know that postponing for two weeks or longer for some of these organizations isn't going to impact their events? For example, one of the organizations getting funding is the Lonsdale Homecoming. Do we know?
That's already happened.
It's already happened, so it's in arrears. We have an organization here that has a Halloween event coming up that's getting funding, a school group getting snacks for a program. I know Knox Pride has events coming up very soon. I just don't want to, and that's just some of the, I don't want to jeopardize somebody else's programming that they're expecting a few hundred or a couple of thousand dollars to make their funding. I just don't understand how funding these impacts the other.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Uh, Councilmember McKenzie. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, could you speak more on to what is the issue with whomever the organization is that is trying to get additional information or get their information together to submit? Sounds like they've had, you guys have been working with them for a couple of months.
So there was an organization, they're not in the list. They applied, as I understand it, back in May. They missed the deadline for the fourth quarter appropriation for the last fiscal year. As you know, Mrs. Kirk is the person who normally handles this. She is on leave. And Ms. Parker and I took over this task recently. So we became aware of this application about two weeks ago. And we were trying to resolve a deficiency in their application. They were missing some documents. And we were not able to get those documents in time to get them in front of council before the deadline for this meeting.
Okay. So if I heard correctly, that you stated if they were to get the documentation in prior to Monday, or Monday at a certain time, they could be included? Is that correct?
It would also mean that council would have to respond to the appropriation request. So whether or not you wanted to give funding to this organization, that would also need to be communicated by the deadline.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Smith?
I'm going to proceed with the motion as it is. The votes will be what it'll be. But all the other organizations have provided the necessary documentation. This is one organization who has not submitted the required information. They were notified two weeks ago, along with every other organization, that the deadline is coming and has passed. And that organization did not comply. So all of the rest of the nonprofits who have worked hard to get their information in deserve to be funded. One organization that's tardy shouldn't hold up all the others. So I'll stick with the motion as proposed.
Okay. The motion's already been made and seconded. Seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion fails because it required unanimity motion, and there was one no vote. Ms. Parker. Okay. Any other items requested to be added by motion? Okay. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Time now for my mayor's report. I want to start by inviting everyone to the city's ninth annual Diversity Business Enterprise Award Ceremony this Thursday. We will be celebrating and recognizing the best of the best, DBEs that the city does business with. We will also recognize the city departments that do the most work with our minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses. The awards will be this Thursday, 8:00 a.m. at the Marble Hall Chapel inside Lake Shore Park. I hope council members can join us. I also wanted to report some really good news about the city's finance department. They have received two very prestigious awards. The first is called the Government Finance Officers Association's Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. And the second award is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So council, I just want to make sure that you're aware that CFO Evans and his team in the finance department, Kitron Smith, who's back there participating in all our meetings, they do amazing work. And this excellence in financial reporting is considered the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And this is the 38th time we have received this award. So congratulations to CFO Boyce Evans, Kitron Smith, and the entire team. Great work. It's really important. Just really think it's important to recognize that even when you earn it year after year, we come to expect that excellence, but it's still important to recognize and understand how much work goes into that. So thank you. Speaking of excellence, I want to mark that this is the second consecutive month that our Development Services Team has met all of the permit turnaround benchmarks. So you remember, this has been a long process that council has been involved with. We didn't even have benchmarks before, or know exactly what were the best things to measure that our customers and city needed most to understand. So I really appreciate council support of all this process and funding and studying of how to do these processes, you know, how to make our permitting process more efficient, transparent, and predictable. And I also want to give a shout out and publicly thank our COO, Grant Rosenberg, the Director of Plans, Reviews, and Inspections, Peter Aaron's, Chris Halli, who's the Deputy of Engineering and overseeing this from the engineering side, and the whole team who've helped work so hard to streamline this permitting process. And this is really good news for our own efficiency. But most importantly, it's making it easier for people to build homes and other things in our city. So you might have noticed that in a recent report by a periodical called Market Pulse, they said that we are processing a record number of permits. And that is good news because housing inventory is increasing. And if this trend continues, we hope to see more affordable housing just in our home market because supply is increasing. So that's good news, and that's certainly part of, one aspect of our attainable resilient Knoxville plan is to make it easier to increase the housing supply. So congratulations to council and to the Plans, Reviews, and Inspection teams for working so hard on that. Quick reminder about our rules of decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forums should sign up with our city recorder, Mr. Johnson, before 4:00 p.m. Please do not use profanity. And when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert's Rules of Order state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly. That is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. I appreciate in advance everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. All right. Are there any reports of council members or committees? Seeing none. Oh, Vice Mayor Smith, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one event that I wanted to bring to the public's attention. On September 30th, at 6:30 p.m., I'll host a First District Town Hall. And then the primary point of the discussion is the upcoming election referendum, September 30th, at 6:30 at Roundup Restaurant. Not everyone's welcome, but particularly the First District.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving along to item 8A, please.
8A is a resolution confirming the appointment of Reverend Rene Kessler to the Historic Zoning Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made to approve and seconded, and double seconded. Any questions or discussion? Is Reverend Kessler present? Just want to thank you for your willingness to volunteer for this board, among many other things you do for our community. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B is a resolution appointing Clarence McDowell as the Fifth District Representative on the Knoxville Golf Course Advisory Committee for a term expiring December 17, 2027.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Is Mr. McDowell present? Well, we thank him for service as well. Any more questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 4, Section 26-228, Section 26-302, and Section 26-410 of the Knoxville City Code, increasing non-consensual tow rates and clarifying the definition of vehicle class and storage fees.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a recent change in state law that has an impact on non-consensual toes. And since this has appeared on our agenda, I've received a few questions from the community. So I was hoping perhaps someone from the Law Department might be able to come forward and just clarify that this issue is separate from the ongoing impact that may come from this new state law.
Well, I can speak that we've received similar questions, and this is indeed a separate matter. And that law has raised a lot of questions and concerns from communities across the state. And we anticipate that those questions will be directed to members of the General Assembly, and maybe they will deliberate once again on how that law might be affecting the community. This item before city council tonight is totally separate. It's been something that the Record Services Commission's been working on for quite some time. And Nick Bradshaw is here, right? Nicholas Bradshaw, present? I think, oh, there you are. And as Director of Fleet Services and has been part of that process. Mr. Swanson couldn't be here this evening, but I don't know if you have anything to add. Ron Mills is here on behalf of the Law Department.
I think you've stated it well, Mayor. They are separate issues.
Anything that the city wants to say about non-consensual toes in the city? One thing that I was able to briefly discuss with the Law Department, when I read about this new state law, my understanding was, oh, well, non-consensual toes are not allowed now in the city. But then I got a different understanding from the Law Department.
Mr. Bradshaw, are you able to speak to that? Or Mr. Rosenberg? I'm confident that they're different issues. I'm not, I don't want to like give a legal opinion on them because I haven't studied it and I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. But Mr. Bradshaw, as Director of Fleet, you are probably familiar with the distinction between what they're voting on and what Ms. Parker's talking about.
Sure. Yeah, the ordinance before council has to do with the rates, the actual charges that the city sets for these non-consensual toes. They've not been updated since 2008. We did a study with M-TAS to survey some of the cities and get an idea of what appropriate rates would be. There's also some housekeeping measures in terms of clarifying the vehicle classes, which are different in this section. They're defined differently in this section of the code than they are in other sections. And it's really important to get those correct and that they are the correct definitions that match DOT standards. The motion act we're discussing is the state, recently passed state law. It has to do with certain restrictions placed on towing companies and their ability to actually conduct the toes. So, you know, I'm not an expert in the state law. I'm somewhat familiar with it just because we've been studying it these last couple of months. I know there's some, there is some litigation ongoing in other cities in regards to this, to this law. It's conceivable that that would reduce the number of non-consensual toes that are conducted, but that would be speculation. But the ordinance before council today has to do with the rates and making sure those rates are up to date and appropriate for the expense that's actually involved by the record companies in doing this important work and clearing our streets and keeping our parking lots clean and safe. And then the important clarifications and distinctions on some of those vehicle class definitions.
And I'll just add that the law that isn't on the agenda tonight and that we don't have, you know, defined opinion on, only affects toes on private property, is my understanding. So I know that doesn't affect towing activities after car crashes or on city property or city streets. It's only on private property. And that's why some private property people are pursuing, are having some questions about it.
Thank you for that clarification. And one other thing I would add is just to emphasize that this is a study that's separate from that new state law. And so it's, these are not new fees expected to cover the cost of a new permitting process if that is something that is to come. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Penix B zoning code, Article 5.4, Table 5-2, to add commercial design standards, excuse me, commercial district design standards in the CG1 zoning district and clarifying the applicable design standards for residential structures. Knoxville, Knox County Planning, applicant, all districts.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank planning staff, the members of Planning Commission, and Director Brooks for putting this item on there. We've had a lot of discussions about needing design standards in CG1, and I just really appreciate you doing that. And I'm very happy to see it here and that we'll be passing it hopefully on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance approving the request of Homestead Land Holdings LLC for an amendment to the Northwest City Sector Plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at 962 North Gallagher View Road, leaving any special purpose land use classifications unchanged, Second District.
We have some speakers signed up. Two in favor and three in opposition. The first person signed up to speak in favor is Parker Bartholomew. Mr. Bartholomew, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you. Parker Bartholomew, 5406 Summit Ridge Lane, 37921. Y'all probably get sick and tired of me giving you some numbers, but I'm going to give you some more tonight. 26,490 is the number of cars on Middlebrook. 23,390, the number of cars on Gallagher View. I would hope we can agree that both of these roads are corridors. Now, 99 feet, that's the distance that this property is from Gallagher View. And 58.7 feet is the distance that this property is from Middlebrook. Or, interesting, another way to look at the distance from Middlebrook is actually less than the width of a RN1 lot that we're talking about here. This property is a corridor. And if it's not a corridor, I don't know what is a corridor. Last time we were here, they mentioned that Mars Hill Road is where the traffic would actually come out at. Mars Hill has nine dwellings and has 12 lots on it. This is exactly the road that you want to add 23, 21 townhomes, depending on how many the developer can get. In 1960, I mentioned this before, the city has, the city had 6.64 people per acre. Now we have less than three per acre. And at the same time, our housing prices have gone up 700%. As you all know, we are in what everybody likes to say is a housing crisis. This is exactly where we need to be putting density, and this is the exact kind of density that we need. $600,000 per townhome is what we want in these communities. It's not going to be a detriment on the neighbors. And I would ask that you all support the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay. The next person signed up to speak in favor of this is Thomas Krajewski. Mr. Krajewski, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thomas Krajewski, 1319 Southgate, here on behalf of the developer who I work with. And the next three items before you are all related, again, for this property at the corner of Gallagher View and Middlebrook Pike. To recap just a few of the points that we discussed at the last meeting, you know, we believe that planning staff did correctly recognize the changes that the city is experiencing and correctly recommended this plan amendment and rezoning. There are two other housing studies, one by the Association of Realtors and then your own attainable resilient Knoxville, that speaks to the changes that we have experienced as a city from 2018, which is the last time a plan amendment was done to the, to the sector plan. We've experienced a lot of growth. We've experienced a lot of change. We've experienced a lot of household formation. And we need the housing stock to be able to support that. I provided to council on Friday some maps that showed the West Hills community. It showed how the community is flanked in the corners, in the northeast corner and southwest corner, with medium-density residential, with higher zoning, residential zoning classifications RN5, RN6. Again, before you hear is RN4. And even on Mars Hill Road, which was just mentioned, there was property that was approved at 5.99 units an acre in 2007, which is really right in line with about the 24 townhome units that we're going to look to develop on this site if we're able to get the rezoning. Over the last several months, really, since we've been working on this project in March, started in March, and then starting in July, talking to the community, working with the community, trying to find a path forward, we've had numerous meetings, numerous conversations. And we had yet another opportunity to try to see if there's, you know, some middle ground to show in good effort that we really do want to be good neighbors and good community members and partners in providing housing. And Councilman Roberto provided a potential solution to look at using the existing C designation that is on this property as a path. Unfortunately, the realization came late. It was really a lot of 11th hour discussions, some of which were 20 minutes before I walked in here with my team, just seeing if there's a path. And ultimately, our team was just not comfortable changing course and changing direction in the 11th hour to try to come to a different solution here. And so we are still interested in what Andrew Roberto was able to find with utilizing the C designation. We will still look at that as a viable option, but it's not something that we can put in front of rezoning this property so that we have a clear path. We've been working with some patient sellers, but ultimately, you know, everything has a timeline and a timeframe. And time is not only a risk, but it's also added cost. And that cost gets passed on directly to the end user, who would be the future owner of the potential townhome. And so we just ask that council consider these three items tonight. We also just wanted to make mention that we have received some positive community support from some of the West Hills neighbors. Residents of West Hills received personal phone calls just saying that they were in support of this item. Also worked with another community association across the street on the other side of Middlebrook on another item. So we do feel like we have some support, which is great to hear because we feel that this is a great opportunity and a great location to provide some housing.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to the people who signed up to speak in opposition. First is Mr. Leland Hume. Mr. Silverstein, you're second.
He said Steve.
Well, I mean, I don't really mind, I suppose. Mr. Silverstein, if you go first, and then we'll have Mr. Hume, and then William Zaietsz.
William.
It's fine. Just go ahead, Mr. Silverstein.
Thank you.
He said Steen.
I thought we had it worked out ahead of time, but apparently not. Larry Silverstein, 7808 Sheffield Drive. I speak on behalf of the West Hills Community Association, and more specifically, the adjacent nearby property owners on Robinson, Mars Hill, and Kempton Roads. I speak in opposition to 9C regarding the sector plan and request that you deny the request to amend from LDR to MDR. Amendments to the sector plan, one-year plan, and rezonings of property require approval on two readings for important reasons. It is because they must be carefully considered and then reconsidered to be sure that the criteria, conditions, and standards contained in our zoning ordinance, general plan, one-year plan, have been met. And amendments will not adversely impact the adjacent and surrounding properties and neighborhood. We respectfully submit that they have not been met. As discussed on September 3rd, the general plan sets out the criteria for an amendment to the sector plan. It centers on whether there are substantially changed conditions since the adoption of the sector plan, in this case, since 2015. Often, the focus on sector plan amendments is whether there are new or improved roads. The last road improvement to Middlebrook was 1995 and the creation of Gallagher View in 2003. in 2003. Both were long before, not since, 2015. Bus service in the vicinity has existed for many years. Bus routes can and do change frequently. It is incorrect for planning staff to conclude that there have been expansions of the transportation infrastructure sufficient to support an amendment to MDR. There is no obvious error or omission in the plan, and the planning staff found none. The report says, quote, "It reflects the existing land use on the property." The word "it" refers to the current LDL, LDR classification. The third item is, quote, "A change in public policy unanticipated by the plan." The planning staff refers to the city's 2024 Housing Strategy Update and recommendations for a wider variety of housing options. A strategy update with broad recommendations is not an adopted change in public policy that can be the sole basis for a sector plan amendment. If otherwise, it would mean every single proposed sector plan amendment must be approved. The fourth item is trends in development, population or traffic that warrant reconsideration of the original plan proposal. The planning staff refers to several multifamily developments built in the vicinity decades ago. That does not support a change in the sector plan for this property, which is surrounded by LDR. City Council on July 23rd considered applications for a property at Lyons Bend and North Shore. It voted to deny a similar sector plan amendment from LDR to MDR by a vote of eight to zero and one abstention because the criteria had not been met. It denied a rezoning from RN1 to RN3. The proposal was for townhomes on an environmentally challenged property with flood issues. While no two properties are exactly alike, and there are different considerations for each, there's a lot in common with that property and the subject property, which, with about two developable acres. The Planning Commission approved the Lyons Bend application 11 to 1 and was reversed by City Council. The Planning Commission approved the subject property on consent. The planning staff report for Lyons Bend property stated there is no change in government policy that pertains to increasing residential density in or around the subject property. Regarding trends in population, it stated, while the city has been experiencing an overall increase in population and housing demand, the traffic environmental conditions around the subject property do not warrant reconsideration of the land use classification. Yet soon after, on the subject property, the planning staff asserts that there's been a change in government policy to support an amendment to MDR. The Lyons Bend report stated, "The location criteria for the MDR land use classification includes being in a transitional area between commercial development and low-density residential neighborhood. These features are not present where the subject property is located. A longstanding Weigel store in the vicinity on Middlebrook does not support a change to MDR for the subject property. This is not a transitional area." The planning staff was correct when it recommended denial of the Lyons Bend property, but incorrect when it recommended approval for the subject property. There have been not any substantially changed conditions to support this sector plan amendment. The subject property is not on a corridor and will not have direct access to Gallaher View or Middlebrook. The driveway that served one long abandoned house cannot be turned into a road. Gallaher View area is stream protected and hillside protected and is heavily forested. Mars Hill must be the access. This property, surrounded by RN1 and LDR, should not become RN4 and MDR. We urge you to deny these applications, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in opposition to item 9C is Larry, is Leland Hume. Okay. William Zaietsz.
William Zaietsz, 1556 Robinson Road. I spoke at the City Council meeting on September 3rd. My family lives on the property adjacent to the property, and we have lived there for over twenty years. I'm speaking, I am speaking in opposition to the amendment to the sector plan and against the proposed rezoning to RN4. This proposal would have a very adverse effect on our property, which is zoned RN1 and is LDR, like the other adjacent and surrounding properties around it. There are no significant changes to support these amendments. The standards for the sector plan amendments and rezoning have not been met, and therefore I request that you deny the proposed amendments. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The third and final speaker in opposition to item 9C is Leland Hume. Mr. Hume, if you could, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you. My name is Leland Hume. I'm president of the West Hills Community Association, live at 6902 Haverhill Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. First, I'd like to say thank you to the council members who took time from their busy schedules to come and visit the site and meet the neighbors and get a firsthand experience of what it is that we've been discussing this evening and also two weeks ago. I'd like to start with a quote by an American writer, philosopher, naturalist, conservationist, and environmentalist named Aldo Leopold. His quote is, "We abuse land because we regard it as a commodity belonging to us. When we see land as a community to which we belong, we may begin to use it with love and respect. Tonight, my neighbors and I come before you to ask that you once again consider the standards detailed in the city ordinances to change the existing land use classifications, designations in the sector one and sector, excuse me, sector and one-year plans and the existing RN1 zoning, and the incompatibility of the proposed townhouse development with the existing single-family detached home neighborhood. We ask that you base your decision on consideration of its proximity to other West Hills properties as well as existing Gallaher View Road, multifamily units south of the site, which have been mentioned earlier, and the new three hundred and fifteen unit luxury apartments that are under construction along the north edge of the Walmart and Sam's property. Also, they will have access to Walker Springs Road and Gallaher View. Furthermore, we respectfully ask that you consider the impact on infrastructure, including overcrowded schools and understaffed fire and police protection. The land use standards established decades ago have been the guiding benchmarks that nurtured the growth of our community to approximately fourteen hundred single-family detached residences. Homeowners trusted the land use protections detailed in city ordinances would provide a level of security that one of their largest investments plus a thirty-year mortgage would not be jeopardized by incompatible structures and densities not meeting the same standards. Residents have a trust and confidence in the city that these land use laws have been established to protect homeowners across the city and be unambiguous descriptions of permitted development based on the best long-term planning practices and most beneficial, most beneficial use to the citizens in all parts of Knoxville, not only West Hills. The property at 962 Gallaher View Road has been the same land use classification, sector plan, one-year plan, low-density residential, and RN1, single-family detached homes, as the property is in the immediate area on Mars Hill, Robinson, Kempton, Westboro, and Brim Road. Last time the property was considered a zoning change was in January of 2016. At that time, the existing zoning was R1E, Low Density Exclusively Residential. The request was for RP1, Planned Residential. Request was made to build single thirty-three-eight thousand square foot memory center care facility. The proposed density was one dwelling unit per acre, which stands today. Planning staff recommended, and I quote, "Recommend that the City Council approve RP and RP1 Planned Residential District zoning up to one dwelling unit per acre," as requested. RP1 zoning and up to one dwelling unit per acre is compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning pattern and is consistent with the sector one, sector and one-year plan proposals for the property." Again, quoting from the 2016 planning staff comments. I, uh, it's one. This site is now developed with a house that sits on top of Hill, a bunch of low-density residential zones, zoned R1E, and lot sizes ranging from point eight three to one point nine acres. Existing properties have not changed. Planning staff comments, "The proposed use of the site is a memory care facility. The proposed density of one dwelling unit per acre will not limit the number of rooms that can be proposed in such a facility. However, the zoning is approved, if the zoning is approved, and memory care facility is not constructed, the proposed density will limit the development potential for residential dwellings to that of the adjacent properties." The commission approved this proposal. Another concern of the neighborhood is we have heard from the developer speaking of missing middle housing and infill and the TDR ordinance, all of which were promoted as an experiment to the limit with, to be limited within the I-640 loop and not to neighborhoods beyond. If this is part of the rationale to approve the changes in land use, this is clearly a violation of the assurances given to the people of Knoxville when the ordinance was passed.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Your time is up.
Thank you. We ask that you deny the application. We thank you for your support and consideration.
All right, council, that concludes the people signed up to speak to item 9C. Deputy Councilmember Helsley?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Claybode, has engineering looked at all at the traffic out at this location? I was out there. I was one of the ones that went and looked the other day. And Mars Hill is kind of a mess. I don't, I think there's six cars a day that travel that road, I'm told. And the traffic on Gallaher View was like from five to, I was there till 7:00 PM, and it never let up. I don't know how you would really ever get out of there. So, has that been looked at at all? I was told you had, but I don't know.
I mean, we look at corridors on a regular basis, but not related to this particular development. We, we've not received any plans as far as, this is just a rezoning, so they've not got to that stage yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a pretty detailed discussion in the, in first reading about my issues with this particular change to the sector and one-year plans as well as the rezoning. But what I wanted to talk about was the discussion that the developer brought up a little bit during their presentation, and I wanted to talk to my colleagues about that. So, after leaving our last session, we had a really good discussion about Planned Residential. There was a lot of discussion about, about what Planned Residential looked like. And I kept thinking about how we could potentially do this in a different way and look at it in a different way. And it was actually that discussion that kind of led me to a different path. There is Planned Residential on this property already. We talked about that. That's the C that's indicated on it. And we have that on this property as well as other properties because of the transition rules. Planned Residential was preserved, like I said, for this property, and what I wanted to do is confirm with planning staff, with planning, with our director, Brooks, as well as the law department, whether or not they could proceed with this through Planned Residential since it was reserved. And the good news is that I can report that it can. And that gives us a different path because this is an artifact from our old code. As you'll remember, Planned Residential was removed when we did the zoning code update, and at the time it was removed, that was the most popular district that we had. And so many of us have had conversations several times about, we need the flexibility of Planned Residential back in the code. So just like we just did design standards in CG1, I hope we can, hopefully in a future time, be talking about having Planned Residential back in our, our zoning ordinance as well. I've worked, after working with Director Brooks and Law Department about seeing if that path was available, I then turned to working with the neighborhood and the developer, and both of them found that an interesting path forward, and there were good parts to that for both the developer and for the, the neighborhood. Because just like we talked about in, in first reading, this particular developer does almost all of their development through Planned Residential in the county, because that's the only place it is right now. And it gives a lot of flexibility, but it also gives the neighborhoods a lot of opportunity to discuss what's going to be in the development plan. The unfortunate part is after securing that path, we ran out of time. The clock ran out, and we weren't able to get that, all the questions answered, but at least we know that that's a possibility in the future. So I just wanted to report that back to you all, that there was a lot of effort in trying to, to find another path, and we got close. We, we identified the path is there, but like I said, the clock ran out on us, so unfortunately it didn't, it didn't work out. But I do still think that Planned Residential is a very key part to our, our process moving forward, and I really think some effort needs to be put in to making sure that we restore that to the zoning ordinance. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Singh?
Councilmember Roberto, can you tell, can you tell me what you meant by the time the clock running out? Is that something we can postpone and continue to work on?
That was something I was working on as well. You know, there's already been delays in this matter for the neighborhood and the developer to meet, and they've, they've done those things, and both have, have, you know, have worked very well. Both of them have tried to, to try to see where they can come up with. The unfortunate thing is that the idea of seeing if we could pursue this path came, you know, to me, rather late. I, I didn't think of it really until it was too late. But then we had to confirm with staff that we could even do it because it was, I think Director Brooks and I called it an out-of-the-box thinking. And it definitely was that you could pursue something other, under a zoning district that doesn't exist anymore. But we figured out we could. So the issue is that we, we just can't work that agreement between the two sides, and ultimately, they, they said, let's, they were very interested in it. It might have worked if we had more time, we just didn't. And so we're gonna, they, they wanted to just move forward with the vote tonight.
Okay.
So, but no, I appreciate the question, and hopefully, knowing that we can do this, I was really hoping we'd pursue it this way so that everyone could see how Planned Residential works, because we haven't seen that in a long time, but unfortunately, it didn't work out that way. But I do want to thank everybody who worked really hard here in the last little bit, but the buzzer went out and we didn't make it. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Helsley?
I, I know my question didn't, wasn't a good one, but I still need to know, if you, if you're looking, quit laughing, sing. If you're looking at Gallaher View and you've got a steady stream of cars, and they barely will let you turn right, like they won't even let you out, and you could never turn left, how, how does this work? And how do you get traffic studies or anything to alleviate a problem that you can see coming in your rearview mirror? Or maybe at your headlights, I don't know.
Mr. Claybode?
Well, once, if, if this was rezoned and they were looking at access to Gallaher View, we would look at, at the required site distance to make sure that, that the access was safe. But during rush hour, on a lot of different corridors, you have that same issue. Typically, people find gaps, and usually they go right, and you can't turn left generally. It's, it's not a safe condition in those rush hour times. During non-rush hour times, though, it's, it's probably not as, it's a big issue.
So it would come back to you if it was changed? Maybe? If the zoning was changed?
We would look at it once it gets through this process and there's a plan develop, design plan development, so we'd be reviewing that. We don't, we've not seen any kind of plan for this right now.
So if it was rezoned, then it would come to you? Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Helsley, they, they, having purchased the property, they want to, you know, they're going to wait and see if this rezoning happens, and then, then other things that connect with engineering would happen. They purchase the property and then start that whole process.
Those swords that sharp on both sides, I know.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. Is there a motion? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this, this item.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Has a motion been made to approve item 9C? Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Better do roll call.
Councilwoman Singh.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Vasimir Smith.
No.
Councilwoman Thomas.
No.
Councilwoman Fugid.
No.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Roberto.
No.
Mayor, the vote is five in favor, four opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. Next item, please.
9D is an ordinance approving the request of Homestead Land Holdings LLC for a one-year plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential for property located at 962 North Gallaher View Road, leaving all special purpose land use classifications unchanged, second district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there's several people who signed up to speak to item 9D. First, and two people in favor, Mr. Bartholomew. First, and two people in favor, Mr. Bartholomew? No, okay, Mr. Krajewski? You have up to five minutes to address council.
Counsel, I, I may just add on the traffic comment that, you know, for us, when we look at these projects, we have to incrementally spend our money in order to stay physically sound. And so, once we know what zoning we have to work with and what regulations and, you know, structure we have, then we can start the design process that allows us to go through that. And we absolutely do go through the traffic process and work with engineers, including traffic engineers. So, that is important to us as well. We want our residents to be safe as well. And the other element I'll add is that there are existing sidewalks and a greenway and a cat stop, all right there. So, in addition to the vehicular traffic that this project may see, there is public transit available as well. Available for questions otherwise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Two people signed up to speak in opposition to nine D. First is Leland Hume. Mr. Hume? You don't wish to speak? Okay, Mr. Silverstein? If you could state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to address council.
Larry Silverstein, 7808 Sheffield Drive. At the meeting two weeks ago, I did speak on the one-year plan and expressed, explained why it's slightly different from the sector plan. But it basically, the same criteria applied to the one-year plan as the sector plan. And it basically focuses on changing conditions. In light of the, the vote to approve the sector plan change to MDR, I believe that the one-year plan discussion is probably moot because the one-year plan has to follow the sector plan. So, I'm not sure at this point it's worth repeating what I already said. Because like I said, I don't think it's gonna be germane anymore. But I'm obviously very disappointed that, in the result on the sector plan.
Okay, councilmembers, that concludes the people signed up to speak to item nine D. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Are the votes the same as they were for the previous item? Okay, the motion carries, five, four. Next item, please.
Nine E is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 962 North Gallagher View Road from RN1 district to RN4 district, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Homestead Land Holdings LLC applicant, second to district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. There are some people signed up to speak. Mr. Bartholomew? Mr. Krajewski? And then to speak in opposition, Mr. Hume? This is for item nine E.
I don't know what that was. I'm Leland Hume, president of West Hills Community Association, live at 6902 Haverhill Drive, Knoxville County. Since this is basically, I guess, a moot point at this moment, I do have a question, though, which is, the discussion is about this one particular lot. For them to be able to have access to Mars Hill, they'll have to purchase another lot. It's a small slither of land, though, that separates Mars Hill from this property. My question is, will that also have to go through the same process? Because at the moment, it falls within low-density residential, single-family, RN1. So, I have to leave you with a question that I don't know the answer to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If council wants to direct that to Director Brooks at the, after people have finished speaking, we can do that. Next is Mr. Silverstein. You have up to five minutes.
Larry Silverstein, 7808 Sheffield Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of the West Hills Community Association in opposition to the proposed rezoning from RN1 to RN4, as approved on first reading on September 3rd, 2024. The standards for rezoning appear in the City of Knoxville zoning ordinance at 16.1E3. Standards, it states, the following conditions must be met for all amendments. A, the proposed amendment is necessary because of substantially changed or changing conditions in the area and districts affected or in the city generally. B, the proposed amendment is consistent with the intent and purposes of this code. C, the proposed amendment shall not adversely affect any other part of the city, nor shall any direct or indirect adverse effects result from such amendment. D, the proposed amendment shall be consistent with and not in conflict with the Knoxville-Knox County general plan and its component parts, including adopted sector plans, corridor plans, and related documents, whether adequate public facilities and available, are available, including but not limited to schools, parks, police and fire protection, roads, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, and water lines, or are reasonably capable of being provided prior to the development of the subject property if the amendment were adopted. On first reading on September 3rd, we addressed all five conditions and asserted that none of them were met, and therefore, the rezoning must be denied. I will reiterate, reiterate just a few of the arguments we made on first reading. Just as was discussed with the proposed sector plan amendment, there have not been substantially changed or changing conditions for this property. This proposed development will adversely affect the traffic conditions on Mars Hill Road, which would be the access point to the proposed development and which would be very close to already heavily traveled Gallagher View. This proposed development, located in very close proximity to the houses on Robinson, would adversely affect those houses that are adjacent to this property as well as the surrounding area on Mars Hill and Kempton. This development is not compatible with the single-family houses that have been there for over two decades. This property is not a transition property between commercial property and residential property. This property has hillside protection and steam protection. Gallagher View is part of floodway protection area and the 10-mile watershed. Development policy in the general plan stresses the importance of future development being compatible and harmonious with what currently exists. This proposal is not compatible with the existing development pattern surrounding properties and thus is not consistent in conflicts with the general plan. The environmental constraints on this property are also problematic for the size of this proposed development, where roughly only half of the four-acre property is developable. Recode in 2020 set the zoning for this property as RN1, which is very different from RN4 and RN5. Nothing has changed to warrant such an amendment. Likewise, the 2016 rezoning of Planned Residential had a limit on density of one dwelling, dwelling unit per acre, so that the proposed memory care facility was not built. Future residential development would be limited to one dwelling unit an acre to be compatible with the surrounding development of LDR and RN1. This density-limiting condition resulted in West Hills not objecting to the development proposal and rezoning. In conclusion, the current requirements of the zoning ordinance must be followed. Since none of the required five conditions for a rezoning have been met, this rezoning must be denied. The very first condition, requiring substantially changed or changing conditions, is enough to deny this rezoning. At another time, there can be consideration of whether the City of Knoxville should consider once again making major amendments to the zoning ordinance. However, at the present time, the current zoning ordinance is the governing law for the City of Knoxville and must be followed. We request that you deny the proposed application to rezon this property. I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, the next person signed up to speak in opposition to item nine E is Clarence Hill. Mr. Hill, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you. My name is Clarence Cordell Hill, address 718 Broome Road. I'm coming before you this evening in opposition to the proposed rezoning and extremely disappointed with previous two votes regarding the planning documents that council seems to have justified not following, following their own guidance. As the previous speaker highlighted, there are specific requirements that the city has adopted for all to follow. And the logic that is being used to change those without going through the proper channels is a little bit bothersome for my part. Another question I have regarding this specific property is, we've, we've heard mentioned Mars Hill Road. We've heard the word corridor. If access to this property is through Mars Hill Road, what will the address be? Will it be to Millbrook? Will it be to Gallagher View? If it's not to Gallagher View or Millbrook, is it on a corridor? I'll leave that for those in the know to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes the people who have signed up to speak to item nine E. Did someone make a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made. Councilmember Singh? Oh, no, councilmember Ryder, actually. You've had your light on for a while, and then I'll go to Singh.
Yeah, I just wanted to state for the record that I have heard from residents, particularly of Kempton Road, who live proximal to this property, that are in favor and not opposed to this and don't feel that it will be a detriment to them. So, I just wanted that on the record, because we're not hearing from those folks tonight. Mr. Claybo, the current property exits to Gallagher Drive and abuts that. It hasn't been determined and hasn't been reviewed by engineering that it can't connect to how, that Gallagher View. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Krajew, I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess up your last name, because I'm not looking. Would you, you guys, when I do look at KGIS, there's another piece of property between yours and Mars Hill. You don't own that? Is that part of your option? Are you purchasing that?
So, that property is also under contract to be purchased, and it actually was also included in this application. So, if you look at the parcel numbers on the planning case, it's, it's map 106, parcels 137 and 136.
So, there is no additional rezoning needed that is being done tonight? Both parcels are being done?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, just thought, that needed some clarity. You know, when I look at the aerials in KGIS, there's massive infrastructure changes in this area in 1998. But then nothing changed about the one-year plan. And the idea that nothing changes and everything stays the same, and yet, another thing that stands out to me, like one thing that was stated la, two weeks ago, was that there are no businesses in this area. But the Sam's Club is 1.1 miles to their front door, 1.2, as a map with Google Maps, to their front door. And the parent responsibility zone for a middle school or a high school is 1.5. But that's not close enough for anybody to go and purchase groceries. But it's fine for us to tell the kids, all over town, they have to walk to school. But that doesn't mean we should have housing near our shopping. I mean, it just, the, the reality of looking at it and being there, and I, I will say, I have been in this area and I have been there, and engineering will look at it. It just, it doesn't make sense to say that this stays rural residential when you've expanded all the roadways around it and it's just frozen in time. And I also do not believe that townhouses are posing a threat with a buffer that it's going to have and no access to the areas of West Hills. So, I'm sorry that people are disappointed in that vote, but I'm going to continue to vote with the recommendations made by the Planning Commission.
Okay, councilmember Thomas?
Yes. We've seen situations that come before us where we've denied rezonings because of problems with how they fit into a particular neighborhood or the geographical locations or the traffic and all that. And when we've done that, sometimes we've seen later proposals to come before us that actually were better. And so, sometimes it, it's good to have patience and not take what is right before us when it doesn't fit well with the neighborhoods and it doesn't fit well with the property. And there are some traffic problems here and all that. What I guess I would say is, I think it would be better for us to show patience and wait and see if there's a new development or a new developer, or not necessarily a new developer, but another way of developing this property that would make us feel less combative and more friction, although everybody's been civil here and will continue to be so. But, and I also think it's unfortunate that there is such a plan that has been talked about with the developer and the neighborhood. And some people feel we've been snookered by the time on it. I don't particularly feel that way. I think we'd be better off not rezoning this property at this time and letting the parties get together and go under the plan that Mr. Roberto had talked about. And so, for those reasons, the reasons that I feel that there's better options here if we have patience, I'm going to continue to vote against this rezoning.
Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to repeat everything that Councilwoman Ryder said, but I'm in very much in agreement with what she said. And I am sorry to hear the disappointment. I think it's an ideal location for housing like this. I do not think it's a threat to the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood. I imagine at some point, there are going to be people who are older and want less room, but don't want to leave the neighborhood. So, I believe it's gonna be an asset, and I hope that the developer continues to work with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, council, Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, I'll be opposed to this one like the last two, but I just want to say, I don't think this development will be detrimental to the neighborhood. I think this developer is well-respected and will do a good job. I'm confident in that. I think there's some traffic things to figure out. But I think the reason that I'm not supporting this is just, for an upzoning change of this magnitude, I would prefer it be more through proactive planning with the neighborhood than, you know, development opportunity-led and them responding to it. So, I think this would be good housing. I think people in the neighborhood will want to stay in there and utilize this housing. And I have confidence that the developer will do a good job. But I think the need for community and neighborhood proactive planning, at least the opportunity to do so, is very important when you're gonna have dramatic upzoning of this size. So, I think there's a reasonable way to vote on both of these. So, that's my perspective on it.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, I assume the votes are the same as the last two items, unless I hear otherwise. So, the motion carries, five, four. Move on to the next item, please.
Nine F is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 5303 Jack Sparrow Pike and 3225 Essery Drive from RN1 district to RN2 district. Kokila Estates LLC applicant, fourth district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine G is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1214 Callaway Drive, excuse me, street, from RN2 district to RN4 district. R Bentley Marlowe applicant, sixth district.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
We are on G. Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have some people signed up to speak on this item. First, two in favor and one in opposition. Mr. Marlowe? You have up to five minutes. Go ahead, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas Avenue, 37921. So, just like two weeks ago, this is a small lot of record over in Mechanicsville. It's got a RN4 lot next door to it. Planning Commission- Planning Commission approved the request to go to RN 4. The primary purpose driving this is so I can save the historic structure out front. It requires quite a bit of rehabilitation, and that's expensive. By right, I can knock it down. In fact, I do have a demo permit in hand, and I can build a tall, skinny fourplex under the missing middle. I'm not asking for any increased density. I'm just trying to find a solution with our current code that will make it economically feasible to save the historic structure, and then go in the backyard near the alley and build a small duplex. I've got a design tendered with Lindsey Crockett at Planning, basically making it look like a garage apartment, because I'm not allowed to build that either. So, it's going to be a very small duplex. I think it's 19 by 24 is the footprint, two stories. It'll appear to have a garage door facing the alley. It'll have two parking spaces off the alley, which is compliant with the missing middle. But I need the RN 4 in order to be permitted to have two structures on the same lot. You'll find evidences of two structures on lots all throughout Mechanicsville, particularly if you look back at the Sanborn map. It's very historically representative of what used to be there, and it provides four dwelling units ultimately, because the original house, I will turn into a conversion under the missing middle rules, into a duplex. So, the original house becomes a one-bedroom unit with a two-bedroom unit, and then this new duplex in the back will be two one-bedroom units stacked. It won't really be visible from the street, because it's entirely behind the original structure, so from the street, it will pretty much look very similar to its historic look, and I believe that's in the best interest of the character of the neighborhood and the historic characteristics, because if not, it will come down. That's just dollars and cents. That home will come down, and a tall, skinny fourplex will be put there, because I'm allowed that by right. I've had to go to a lot of delay, a lot of expense, to jump through multiple hoops with BZA and with planning, just to be able to try to find a solution that I think is what the city wants. It's saving a historic home. I'm working around a mature tree. I wish there was a simpler and easier way, but that's what it is. I would like to take a moment. I was under the impression last meeting that Omni had withdrew its opposition. Councilwoman Ryder informed me that perhaps I was not informed to the latest. I'm still not sure. One faction of Omni has told me that Omni will not be moving a position on a rezoning outside of their overlay. Another faction tells me that they're leaving it up to individual homeowners, so I'm completely clueless. I do know that the lady that owns and lives next door, Ms. Jean Davis-James, is in favor of my proposal, and she wrote as much on the Planning Commission's comments. You can see that. And Ms., I'm going to mispronounce her name, Conosapac, who also owns and lives four doors down or five doors down, she wrote to Planning, she's in favor of my proposal. And so, that's two homeowners on the street, on that same side of the street, including the one right next door that is in favor of this. And there was overwhelming support from the rest of Mechanicsville neighborhood, including members of Omni that wrote favorably on the Planning Commission's comments, and I think several of them may have emailed you last week or two weeks ago. So, overwhelmingly, the neighborhood is in favor, with the exception of perhaps Omni, but again, I'm not in the overlay. And, you know, I live there too, and I've lived there for 20 years, and virtually, my entire net worth is invested on the streets of Mechanicsville. So, I would never propose to do something that I don't believe is in the best interest of the neighborhood, because the best interest of the neighborhood is also my financial best interest. So, I think, you know, this is, this is a difficult or messy kind of way to get the best solution, I think. But it allows me to save the historic home, save a mature tree, increase housing density, which are all goals the city encourages us to do as developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Parker Bartholomew. Mr. Bartholomew, you have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Thank you. Parker Bartholomew, 5406 Summit Ridge. I'll be quick. One of the reasons that we're here is that in Missing Middle, we are not allowed to have a single-family house. And so, we're working through that, but it, currently at this time, you can have a fourplex on this lot by right. For some reason, two duplexes does not equal to one fourplex. I'm not exactly sure why that is in Missing Middle, and we're going to work through that, but you also can't have a single-family house and a duplex in Missing Middle, and we're going to work through that hopefully also. I don't think it makes sense, and I, again, by right, he can have a fourplex here, and so what he's trying to do is two duplexes. That middle area will save a tree, because you're able to separate the buildings, and also, he's going to be able to save an existing structure. As Mr. Marlowe mentioned, he lives in that area. You can look at what he's done in that area, and I would say that any of those homes that have been redeveloped, you would be proud to have in the neighborhood, and they show and maintain a high quality of historical structures. He doesn't use vinyl siding. He's using hardy board on it. So, I think this is going to be a beautiful structure and fit into the neighborhood, and we're going to continue to try to work through some of the, some of the things on Missing Middle that we don't necessarily like, because I don't, at least when we've spoken with many folks, they don't understand why we can't keep a single-family house in Missing Middle. So, we're going to be working through that, but on this one, two duplexes is a much, much better solution than one fourplex. Thanks.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak to this item in opposition is Nathaniel Schelso. Mr. Schelso, if you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
Nathaniel Schelso, 237 Dedrick Avenue in Mechanicsville. So, the first lot here on the agenda is a 30-foot-wide non-conforming lot. I think it's just, just over about 4,000 square feet. The Planning Commission voted 9 to 5. It was not a unanimous vote for this rezone, and they voted against the staff recommendation, which was to deny this rezone. So, I think that this case warrants some discussion and amongst you guys on why we should approve this. At the heart of the issue with this request, or the plan for this request, as the applicant has said, is to do a second structure in the rear of the property. RN 2 does not allow a second principal use. RN 4 does. So, we, or me and neighbors in old Mechanicsville, we are concerned of the precedent that this could set to basically putting more RN 4 in our neighborhood on non-conforming lots that would result in doubling of the number of structures, which was not the intent of the middle housing code. The intent of the middle housing code was primarily for infill or conversion of existing structures, not second structures. Additionally, I'm very concerned about what I think was a loophole or an oversight that we had when we passed middle housing. We put in minimum lot widths for these various housing types. 45 feet is the standard lot width for doing a lot of these housing types. Again, this is 30 feet. Another is 25 feet. What the applicant has found out and what we've all learned is that there's another section of the code, in the zoning code, that basically says, as long as you still fit within the dimensional standards of the other setbacks, you can do anything that is outlined by right, which middle housing is not any sort of special use, rezon request. So, that's something that's a bit concerning to all of us, that the 45-foot width no longer matters. You can do a 25-foot or a 35-foot fourplex. So, that's concerning, and I think it could potentially be fixed in some way with a code amendment, but right now, the case before us is to do another structure for RN 4. Another structure in the middle housing code, you know, it calls for, you know, a front setback of, you know, 10 feet or whatever matches the neighborhood. So, what's, what's the plan here? How are we going to put a second structure in the rear of the property? The applicant plans to apply for a middle housing type with a, you know, structure in the back. The middle housing code only allows a variance by staff for, I think, some rear, inside setbacks, a little bit of the front, so they're going to get denied. The applicant's going to get denied to build what he says he wants to build and what he needs RN 4 to do. What's he going to then do? He's going to appeal that denial, a staff denial, to the Planning Commission. All staff denials or approvals can be appealed to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, as they may have frequently do, seems pretty content with passing these kinds of things, and then that could also then get appealed right back to City Council, where we could have a duplex proposal in the rear of a property under a middle housing code that was not envisioned right back before this body. I think it does a disservice to the goal of what we want middle housing to do, to promote growth in the city in a way, and that if this gets approved, ultimately, maybe all the way up to this body, I think it could put a pretty bad taste of what the middle housing code intended to do. Some other notes. Secondly, Knox Heritage recently listed the national historic district that this property lies in as fragile and fading. If you guys move to approve, well, you guys have made a move, a motion to approve, I think you should add the historic zoning designation with the Mechanicsville Historic Design Guidelines to ensure that this property meets our historic designs, that the overlay exists, but just not on this part of the National Registry District. I'm out of time. Thanks.
Counsel, that concludes people who signed up to speak to this item. Counsel, no, everybody turned their light off. Vice Mayor Smith?
Yeah, just for the applicant, Mr. Marlowe, you'd come up. Two questions. I understand you live in the neighborhood, you develop many properties and own many properties in the neighborhood. Mr. Schelso just brought up the concern that the property may not adhere to the standards that either officially or unofficially make it cohesive with the rest of the neighborhood. I know you mentioned saving the structure. Can you talk about the design associated with what you're going to do on this property and its alignment with the surrounding properties, design-wise?
Well, so, by saving the structure, the size, location, mass, and scale of the structure will remain the same. We've taken down many of the wood ornamentation and have rebuilt them, so the little cornices and details will come back. The poplar siding on the structure is pretty badly deteriorated. Because I'm not in the overlay, I will be putting back hardy, a smooth hardy that is approximately the same reveal, about four inches. That is permitted by the National Park Service, so I could do that on, you know, Paul Revere's house. In fact, that's what the National Park Service would require. So, in a lot of ways, it will be compliant with the overlay design guidelines when I'm done. A few details will be in the windows. I'm not a big fan of wood windows, but because this is not in the overlay, I don't have to do that currently. Mechanicsville overlay is, unlike all the other overlays in the city, it does not allow hardy plank. I've tried in years to talk to Omni about addressing that unsuccessfully, so I'm not in the overlay, so I'm going to be putting hardy plank on it. But like I said, hardy planks approved by the National Park Service on historic, National Historic Register projects.
And Mr. Schelso also outlined a process that you might have to follow subsequent to this?
So, I'm not sure that he's correct there. The missing middle housing guidelines talk about a front setback, not a build-to line. So, a setback doesn't require me to bring something up within a certain distance to the front property line. It just says I can't be any closer. So, I believe that that's a non-issue, first of all. Secondly, I think that with the existing structure staying there, that satisfies the front setback, and that any secondary structure, as long as one structure satisfies the front setback, I believe any secondary structure, it's a moot issue as well. So, I think on double counts, it's moot.
So, you don't intend to or need, see the need to go through the process that Mr. Schelso just outlined?
I believe that with this rezoning, I will submit my missing middle application to Ms. Crockett and Amy Brooks at Planning, and I believe that it will be passed. I've submitted a site plan, and I believe I was told it looked compliant, but I've also received an email from Ms. Brooks that said, "We don't deal with hypotheticals anymore, and everything we've told you by email is moot." So, I'm kind of over here in purgatory, just, I'm shooting in the dark, trying to, trying to find a way forward. Been working on this since January or February.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel member Ryder?
Yeah. Mr. Marlowe, so, you own the property next door, and then the property that we're currently discussing is 27 feet wide? Is that correct?
30 or 32 feet wide, I think.
Okay. There's another property that's 27, correct?
That's, that's not subject to this. That's further down the street.
Okay.
So, I own three, skip one, Ms. Jean's house, and then I own the next three. And so, one, one of these, so those, these three, this group of three, this is one of them, I believe it's 30 or 32 feet, and then the one that's already RN 4, 75, and then the next one that we're going to be discussing is 25.
Okay. So, one of them is later coming up in the agenda?
It's 25, yes, ma'am.
And the 25-foot one is next to a property that's 70-some feet wide? Is that correct?
So, yeah.
That was previously rezoned?
Yes. So, the 75-foot wide one is an anomaly. It, so, all these lots originally were 50 feet throughout Mechanicsville, and then many of them were divided by deed years and years and years ago. We're, the one we're discussing now, 1214 Callaway, it is a structure that was on one half of the original ward lot. And so, then, when Planning required me to rezone, because there, or Peter, I guess, really, there's an old ward line lot running through there that you can't build across it, even though it's just sort of made up. You can't build across it. So, I said, "All right, we'll just, we'll replat this." So, I could cut out 1214, and based on the description and the deed, it became a 25-foot wide, or 30-foot wide lot. Shoot, I think this one's 30. That left a remainder of 25 feet. And I argued then that that 25 feet should be its own standalone lot, because it's the other half of the ward lot. And Peter and everyone said, "No, that's not how it's going to be." And I said, "Well, if that imaginary ward line that you're not letting me build over is causing this whole replat process, then that line ought to count for something." Evidently, it didn't. So, they made me combine that additional 25 feet with the neighboring 50-foot lot, which is how we get this 75-foot wide lot that's totally out of character with Mechanicsville and unprecedented.
Well, I'm very familiar with that. I own a property that's much wider and was out of character, if you want to call it that, with my neighboring properties. That was a very common thing. Somebody would, you know, everything was subdivided 50, 50, 50, 50, and somebody would buy off 50 plus some. So, mine was 50 plus 10, and then I got a part of a 25, so, you know, I get that. That's not, but my thing is, is when you were in the process of replating it, I'm just trying to follow your mindset, because you have one that is now, without me clicking on it, I think you said 75, whatever it is, minus or minus, and then you have one that's 30. I'm looking at the ward map, actually. So, when you were replating, you didn't decide to make a 50 and a 50. You didn't decide to make two conforming lots. You decided to make one lot be 70-something feet, so be out of the norm or out of character, as you call it, and then you have another one that's substandard, existing non-conforming. You made that choice.
Well, at the time, there was no missing middle, and that was discussed in consultation with Planning. The idea there, that's where the whole RN 4, to get multiple structures, I think it was Ms. Brooks that alerted me to that, was that if I combined and make the 75-foot wide lot, because I was saying, I didn't want to tear down the existing home in that lot, I didn't want to cut down the mature trees. Brian Barry's off, Brian Barry and Peter were like, "Just clear the whole lot, Bentley, and you can build a five-unit multiplex." Or, back then, it was just a five-unit multifamily development. I said, "I don't want to clear the lot." And Ms. Brooks said, "Hey, if you go to RN 4, you could build a second structure on that lot." And that's what started all this. So, that's when, "All right, all right, that's how we'll try to do this, because then we can try to save that structure and those trees. That's how we're going to cut this up and plant it." So, I had my surveyor draft that and get it approved by Planning. I requested that RN 4 last year. It came RN 4. Shortly thereafter, what was it, February this year, you all adopt missing middle housing. So, then, that plot was already recorded.
Which you supported. I just want to interject.
I did support, and I-
You did support, period. I've got 30 seconds left. Keep going. We won't talk about that.
I supported it, and I repeatedly kept talking about non-conforming lots, these narrow lots, and everybody kept ignoring me. And so, here they are on the forefront.
Well, because we specifically exempted them in missing middle housing.
Well, Planning didn't write it in, but I kept saying, "Look at 17.3," I think it is, and nobody really looked at it at that time.
So, you've gotten variances- So, you've gotten variances on this property, and now we're on the path to an upzoning, and you'll file a plan, and if it's, there'll just be a series of appeals to try and see what is the maximum you can do on a 30-foot lot?
Well, I don't believe, so, I have the variances required. I have a demo permit, and I have the variances required, and a plan that has been approved three doors down for a duplex. If this dies today, that's what will ultimately happen. That historic home will be up on Elm Street and in a landfill, because it's not cost-effective to save in its current state. I can't make it longer. I can't make it taller. I can't adjust the front facade under the missing middle rules. So, all it can be is the footprint it is, and at most, that's a duplex. And if that's all the square footage at the end of the day, it doesn't hit the pro forma to get the bank to release the construction loan. There's got to be more square footage there, or more income source.
Counsel member Ryder, going to see if any of your colleagues have some questions or comments. Okay, seeing none. Counsel member Ryder, if you have more comments or questions, we'll go back to you.
So, Mr. Marlowe, I know that you're going down this pathway for Ms. Wolf, I believe, for another property in Park Ridge, right? Like, have you applied to do an RN4? Let me not mix apples, oranges, bananas.
Yeah, I don't own that property. That's kind of a-
I know you don't own it, so never mind.
That's kind of a totally different scenario.
But that is on the docket for a rezoning, correct, coming up?
It's been applied for, it's not yet paid for. We're still talking with Peter Arons. We may have a solution.
Never mind. I'll retract my comment. Do you anticipate this property, after tonight's rezoning, coming back to us for additional things?
I do not think so. I think with this RN4, I've already submitted a site plan. Lindsay's waiting on elevation for the modification on this one side of the historic structure, and I believe once that's done, she will have everything she's requiring for a missing middle housing application. And I do not believe that there's any other issues with, with the application. I think everything else is compliant with missing middle, but that's her expertise, not mine. So, I believe that I would ultimately get her approval for missing middle, then I would go to Peter, and we'd discuss design and safety standards, and I don't foresee any problems there, and I believe I'd be issued a permit and would be building.
Okay. And you've already gotten the variances for the setbacks, side to side?
The, well, I don't need variances under, if this is approved RN4 and I save the structure, those variances, that was a waste of $250.
Okay.
That was, that was, that was a confusion between Jen Scobie and I, because at the time, I turned in all these applications, not knowing what my options were. She went ahead, and I did not pay for it initially. But then, I was in Alaska, things were confusing. She let me know that she did go ahead and put it on the agenda, and she had paid for the publication, and was like, "Hey, you haven't paid it." And I was like, "Oh, I wasn't going to go forward with that one, but if you've already paid for it and you put it on the agenda, I thank you for that favor. In good faith, I'll go ahead and pay for it as a backup." Because there's been other times when that department, they knew I was trying to get something on the agenda, and they didn't put it on the agenda, even though they were holding checks from me. And so, I think it was sort of like, it'd be unfair, I screamed foul then, it'd be unfair not to pay for it when they actually did put it on the agenda. I was just trying to be a good, a good player, a good developer cooperating. So, I went ahead and paid for it. I got the variance, and if this works and that variance, Peter's office got an extra $250 bucks from me that I didn't need. But it gives me an option, if you guys reject it, that fast-tracks me to demolish that old house and get started on this new duplex. Or, I may pop the top and do a fourplex. I designed the duplex because at the time, I thought that might be all I could do, and I was trying to be respectful of the block face and not overpower Ms. Jean's house next door, because this lot's already about 18 inches taller than her lot. So, if I, the taller I make this house, the more it puts her in the shadows, and I don't really want to do that to her. I'm really trying to find the best solution forward.
You're making a good argument for the expansion of design guidelines, whether, you know, in the same format or not. Anyway, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Sorry, it's hard to keep up with it all. There's a lot of different properties that we keep getting emails from at times from you, and so, I'm trying to keep up with which goes where.
I understand. I stay confused myself.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Just one more comment, and it's just a general one, is that, you know, I understand the dollars and cents of development, but holding a property in limbo at the threat of demolishing it is not something that I would encourage you to use as a position in future discussions. But it doesn't help.
I understand. I think any other developer, if I didn't live in the neighborhood, I would have leveled the thing long ago. I never would have even tried this convoluted path. This is trying to figure out, what is the missing middle? Because it's new, and we're all sort of figuring it out.
I understand. I just wouldn't make this a common theme.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel member Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Picking back a little bit on what Vice Mayor Smith said, I understand why planning staff didn't recommend this, and I understand the concerns that the neighborhood and Mr. Schelso discussed, you know, in his comments as well. What, Mr. Marlowe, what you said, and it may have just been an oversight as you were going through, because there was a lot of discussion, so I understand that, but you used the word "if" you preserve the house, and my understanding was that you are preserving the house. So, I just wanted to make sure that as a part of this, you're committing to preserving the house. Is that correct?
Correct. If I get the RN4 zoning, I will be preserving that house.
Okay. And the challenges that we've talked about, I mean, in a lot, a lot of this discussion today, I understand those. If I'm thinking about the impact on the neighborhood, we certainly don't want to be encouraging demolition. That's not the intention here. And I can't imagine that demolishing the house and then putting up a tall skinny or something else like you're mentioning wouldn't be much more disruptive to the neighborhood than doing what you're proposing to do by putting the duplex in the back. It is, it's a challenging piece, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly that you're preserving the house. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel member Hesley?
I was just going to make a comment. I think we agreed, if I'm not mistaken, to come back in a year and look to analyze missing middle and see how it was working. Was that right? Am I wrong?
We hope to get a mid-year report to counsel in a few weeks, and then a full-year report when we have a full year's of data.
So, I feel like that we're blowing through it in Mechanicsville, like, and I understand he's trying to do whatever he's trying to do, but it just feels like, I think if you do all this, then you risk souring a whole lot of people on middle housing in general, because you're putting eight units on a 35-foot wide lot or whatever. So, I think it's problematic to try to change the rules in Midstream, and that's just my opinion.
Okay. Counsel member Ryder?
Well, yeah, just because we have a peaked audience here, I feel like, gosh, they don't, they might not get the missing middle housing report. Ms. Brooks, or Ms. Ball, whoever would like to be on the spot about this. How many applications for missing middle housing have come in, ballpark?
About a dozen, I think. But Ms. Brooks, maybe you have more up-to-date information?
We've had 22 applications to date.
So, they're increasing.
And how many of them have been approved?
I'll ask Ms. Crockett. She's double-checking.
What's that?
She's, she's verifying right now.
Okay. How many of them, and this is just, just because I know, Mr. Marlowe, you've submitted some, correct?
I have two that have been approved.
Out of the 22, two are Mr. Marlowe's?
We've had 14 total.
Okay. And how many of that 14 are Mr. Marlowe's?
Two.
Two, you've had two approved?
Two approved.
And how many of you total?
I've only, they've only accepted two applicants.
So, you're two for two?
I'm two for two currently.
Okay. And you've gotten 22 total, and 14 have been approved. Okay. Well, I look forward to the report. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The motion on the floor is to approve item 9G. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
9H is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 1224 Callaway Street from RN2 District to RN4 District, R Bentley-Marlowe, applicant 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Speakers, ma'am.
Oh, speakers, sorry. Mr. Marlowe, you have up to five minutes to address counsel on item 9H, and Mr. Bartholomew, you're next.
Bentley-Marlowe, 322 Douglas, 37921. Very similar. We're now on the other side of the large parcel. This one's slightly to the north. It's 25 feet wide. This one may be coming back, or at least to Planning. This one, I would like to experiment and see if I can save the house as a single-family house. It's in such a condition that it would be cost prohibitive to cut it in half and build a firewall. So, if approved, I would like, the plan is to build a very similar-looking, small duplex in the backyard, but I'd like to save the single-family home as a single-family home. It also, it is, this one's motivated by dollars and cents, and I think it also is a good test to see what was the intent of what's passed with missing middle. Everyone I've talked to did not believe that it was not allowed to have single-family homes and missing middle housing types mixed. They sort of thought that that was just intuitive. I, I believe that the appropriate way to look at it would be to treat the existing single-family home as existing non-conforming, and then allow a missing middle housing type. And this would only apply on lots that are zoned RN3 or RN4 inside the TDR, so we're not going too crazy with the cheese whiz. But I think it, my fear is, so I have done homes in the Nashville area back 15 years ago, and shortly after, while I was doing that, the homes on either side of me, where I was working in Nashville, started getting bought, torn down, and tall skinnies going up. And the way that happened in Nashville, my understanding, after talking to a couple lawyers that practiced there in real estate, Nashville allowed duplexes by right everywhere. And then they layered, developers came in and started layering the Tennessee Horizontal Property Regime Act. And that allows you, if base zoning allows X number of density, then you can build that many condos. And they made the leap that, since duplex was not defined in the code in Nashville, it was just two dwelling units, that they could do two tall skinnies, condo them out, the HOA that they create would cover the yard and the driveway. And that's what led to the wholesale demolition of, like, you can go to Nashville today and see entire neighborhoods leveled. I do not want to see that here. So, if we don't allow something like this, what you're going to see is developers will knock down older homes, particularly those that are not in the best of shape, and they're going to build a quadplex. Or, they may build four standalone, I mean, they may start trying to test the legal waters with, using HPR with their missing middle. Nobody can give me a clear answer. I've talked to Ms. Brooks about it. She, she said she's not that familiar with HPR. I've talked to a couple lawyers in town. They think it can be done. So, I'm trying to find a path forward that, if you can make it streamlined, if a developer can avoid paying a lawyer, we pay a lot of professionals, if we could just not pay a lawyer, we probably wouldn't go that route. We would, we just want a clear and predictable path forward so that we can build. And that's what I'm trying, I'm in the weeds here, trying to find and craft a predictable path forward. And I think it's, it's talking about, you know, allowing multiple structures in some of these lots, or allowing to mix single-family, so that the old house doesn't get demolished, but the developer can put a missing middle housing type back against an alley where it's kind of appropriate to make the pro forma work to save that house. Otherwise, if the dollars aren't there, the houses won't get saved. Thank you.
Okay. Next person is Parker Bartholomew. Okay, he doesn't want to speak. Nathaniel Schelso signed up to speak in opposition to item 9H. Mr. Schelso?
Nathaniel Schelso, 237 Denrick Avenue. We're not allowed to defer, I mean, defer time to someone who didn't sign up, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I will read her email, Frances Worley, my neighbor over here, real quick. It's not very long. "As a Mechanicsville resident, I urge the council members to consider the precedent they will set by approving the rezoning changes at 1214 and 1224 Callaway. Mechanicsville is one of the oldest residential neighborhoods in the city. It was planned and established well before automobiles became a ubiquitous part of daily life. Our streets are narrow and street parking is already an issue. This neighborhood is largely, largely comprised of single-family homes on small, non-conforming lots. This neighborhood was not designed for the number of units and RN4 zoning would allow. Current zoning exists for a reason, and population density packed beyond the health of a historic neighborhood's planning, infrastructure, and character is not something to be taken lightly." And just a couple of follow-ups. This is a 25-foot wide lot. The other one was 30, so maybe that'll make the difference and sway you guys to deny it. But a few things, you know, if the applicant's correct that a front setback is not a build-to line, then I think that's a very big problem we need to fix. If it's just a minimum setback, you know, our current zoning for even a single-family house is the average of the block face or X number of feet, to try and keep everything in uniformity. If a middle housing type can be just minimum and then halfway down a lot, that's not good. So, maybe we need to fix that as well. In terms of multiple structures on lots, there are, there are a good number of RN4 properties that I believe Parker Bartholomew gave a map of RN4 properties around Mechanicsville, and they have multiple principal uses on them. Case in point, those lots are bigger. Like the one next door to this, those fit the dimensional standards to be big enough to put multiple structures on and not be cramming too many in or look out of character with the neighborhood. That's not what a 25-foot wide lot is. This should be denied, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Counsel, that concludes the people signed up to speak to this item. Counsel member Ryder, and then Fugit.
Yeah. So, Mr. Marlowe, I mean, we voted in favor, I think, eight or nine to zero on this last time. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson? You, what's that?
There was no opposition.
There was no opposition. We're having a lot of discussion with code, and you email us a lot about code. And you are saying that you want a predictable path, that developers, builders want a predictable path forward. Okay. But, but you're not talking about a predictable path forward to build a house on a 50-foot lot in an RN2, or an RN1, or, or, you know, what have you. You're saying you want a predictable path forward for being able to max out and build multiple structures on lots that are 30 feet and 27-foot wide.
I would like to exert, you know, to, to do the, to use my property to its highest and best use, yes, ma'am. Utilize my property rights. You all passed missing middle, which allows four units by right in the TDR area, which my properties are. I repeatedly sounded the whistle. In fact, I paid quite a bit of fees and proposed my own version and amendments to missing middle. In fact, I'll be on Planning Commission next meeting with amendments to missing middle. And I always brought up and talked about these non-conforming lots, because they are everywhere in the TDR, everywhere in the TDR.
They're out there, but they're not every single lot. I just, I just want to be clear, there's an audience here, and there's people at home watching.
Sure.
And I don't think we have an unpredictable path for people who are building things that are pretty much the norm on normal lots. You're asking for a predictable path forward on substandard lots to be able to max them out and build things behind existing things, otherwise, as you hang us over a threat, it comes across as very threatening, like, "If you don't give me this, then I'll just tear it down. I'll just tear it down." That's, that's what I'm hearing you say, and you're asking for a predictable path forward. I think our code's pretty predictable. It clearly determines that a lot of, in the city, is 50-foot wide and 100-foot deep. That's not unclear for any builders, is it?
But there's many, many lots in the city that are not 50 feet wide.
They're not many, 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 many lots.
Well, there's a lot in Mechanicsville.
You just happen to own some of them. I just want to qualify your comments. I don't think it's very fair to say that our code doesn't provide a predictable path forward for the norm. You're asking for predictable path forward on substandard lots.
I think to clarify my-
Existing, non-conforming lot.
To clarify my point.
Mr. Marlowe, she asked you a question, you can answer, but she's just making a comment. There's no need for you to respond.
I think that's not fair to say that the code's not clear. The code's pretty clear on that. You're asking for a predictable path forward. That's my comment. I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Fuget.
Thank you. I don't have a question, other than a com, several comments. I think I'm struggling with this, because I've lived with a lot that there was a big house on, torn down, and it can be divided into three lots. Houses are being built. It meets the code. It meets our ordinances, but it feels very much out of character with what is around it. But it meets the rules. I think my struggle with this is what we're talking about, is this is a non-conforming lot that wants even more. I also find it interesting, just for what it's worth, that Planning Commission, the planning staff denied both of these, and the planning commissioners that voted against this were mostly city-appointed planning commissioners to not do the RN4, because the language is, because the property does not meet the intent of the RN4 district. This word "intent" is the thing that I keep thinking we're tripping up on, and what this raises for me is that where there is ambiguity, boundaries will be tested. That's the nature of the way the world works. So if this is, I agree with Councilwoman Ryder that things are clear on what is conforming, but when this isn't conforming, I think this is where we're spending a lot of time trying to decide this. And it's not on the fly, but it feels like it. And I'm not real comfortable feeling like doing this on the fly, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve item 9H. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion fails. I think we might, I think we need a roll call. I couldn't hear people, so let's do a roll call.
Councilwoman McKenzie. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder. Councilwoman Roberto.
No.
Councilwoman Singh. Councilwoman Smith. Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman Fuget. Councilwoman Helsley. Vote is four in favor, five opposed.
Okay, the motion fails.
Thank you.
9I is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 6504 Dean Hill Drive from IG District 2O District, DD Development Ventures Corporation, applicant 2nd District. Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmembers, would you like to take a brief recess? Let's reconvene at 8:03. Okay, like to reconvene the meeting. Mr. Johnson, if you could please call the next item.
10A is a resolution approving the appeal by Jeremy Greenhouse on behalf of Liquid Environmental Solutions of the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision to uphold the zoning administrator's determination that LES is not in compliance with Article 4, Section 2.3.2. B. 3. K. of the 2017 City of Knoxville zoning ordinance for a property located at 1307 Galway Street, thereby reversing the zoning administrator's determination, 6th District.
Mayor, this has been brought to my attention that this is still ongoing, conversations and meetings with our, I guess, attorneys, so I'd like to postpone this to our next meeting, please.
Okay. Motion's been made to postpone for two weeks. Has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to postpone carries. Next item.
10B is the resolution approving the appeal by William Burton, thereby overturning the decision of the Knoxville-Knox County Planning Commission to grant a special use application filed by Mike Stevens Homes to increase the maximum height of a townhouse in North Shore Town Center master plan RN3, CR2, C, and HP districts for property located at 9426, 9430, 9434, and 9438 Horizon Drive, 2nd District.
Okay, councilmembers, we'll proceed with our normal appeal process. We have one, one person signed up to speak on behalf, in favor of the appeal, and three in opposition, and the person in favor will have an opportunity for a two-minute rebuttal. So, Mr. Wayne Klein, you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel on item 10B. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Klein. I'm from the firm of Hodges, Duddy &amp; Carson at 445 South Gay Street. I'm here on behalf of the appellant to ask that you overturn the approval by the Planning Commission to amend the previously approved planned district's special use, which would allow an increase in the maximum height of a townhouse from 35 feet to 41 feet. Beaumont is the residential neighborhood within the North Shore Town Center development. It sits to the west of Pellicippi Parkway, and importantly, for our purposes tonight, within 1,000 feet of the Pellicippi Parkway. Pellicippi Parkway is a scenic highway designated under Tennessee Code 5417114. So what we're talking about this evening is the 35-foot maximum height limitation for a townhouse Mr. Stevens Homes has applied for as a special use. First, the residential design standards for the Beaumont subdivision have a maximum height of 35 foot for townhouses. This restriction is exhibited for you in my letter to you of September 13th as Exhibit B. And I hope you received all my letters, and I hope you got to read them, because there's much more than I can fit in five minutes in all the letters. The maximum height according to that design standard is 35 feet. The second regulation requiring a height no greater than 35 feet is Article 2.4 of Appendix B of the City zoning code for RN3 properties. This regulation requires the maximum building height to be measured as the vertical distance from the front grade at the front of the building line. RN3 requires a 35-foot cap. And Article 16.2. F. 2 provides the standards that must be met for a special use. And I'm going to quote some of them. The most important being the use must be compatible with the character of the neighborhood, including the size and location of the buildings in the vicinity. And the proposed height change is the very essence of this appeal. It's not consistent with the adopted North Shore Town Center development plan and standards. Although the view of the mountains is not considered by Planning Commission staff, this developer marketed and sold the remaining townhouses in Beaumont subdivision as having spectacular mountain views. The increase in the height of this townhouse from 35 feet to 41 feet completely eliminates the views of approximately 24 townhouses behind this requested special use, as it will block their view of the mountains. This request is not in harmony with the general purpose, intent, or character of the neighborhood, because it imposes an incompatible height variance that blocks the view of the mountains for these folks behind the proposed special use. Approval of the special use to increase the height of this townhouse will injure the value of the adjacent properties, particularly those behind the townhouse, as the view of the mountains will be eliminated. Mountain views are a factor considering and valuing real property improvements. In this case, if the special use is granted, the four homes in the townhouse that are allowed the special use will have an exclusive mountain view, whereas the 24 townhouses behind them will no longer be able to enjoy a mountain view. On the other hand, denial of this application for special use will preserve that which the overwhelming majority of the Beaumont property owners in part purchased a mountain view. You see in your file and affidavit, "From a resident who's not afraid to stand up to the developer and his crews regarding their, her experience," and her name is Megan Vesser. She's the owner of a property, and during her discussions with Mr. Stevens and his agent, Marquita Stevens, before she purchased her lot and contracted with Mike Stevens Homes to build the townhouse, she talked about, and he talked about, the principal condition was the mountain view that she would have from her townhouse. She would not have purchased, nor would she have paid the price she paid for her lot and townhouse without the mountain view component that was promised to her as part and parcel of her purchase of her property. By promising, marketing, and selling the lots in Beaumont with spectacular mountain views, Mike Stevens created the character of the neighborhood to include spectacular mountain views. The homeowners paid for the views as part of their purchase price, allowing Mr. Stevens Homes to increase the height of the townhouse-
Mr. Klein, your time is up. Thank you. Next is Taylor Forrester. You have up to five minutes. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919. Here on behalf of the applicant for the special use, Mike Stevens Homes. Mike Stevens Homes, if you're familiar with the North Shore Town Center, has basically all but a few designed and constructed every, every house out there. He's been there since the, since the beginning of that development, and it lives there, is, is present in the community, has made a huge impact on that community. And Mike Stevens Homes, they create a unique product, individual product for each house, each lot, and a, and a great design. This proposal is for four townhouse units on a, on a specific piece of property. These are the last four, you know, townhouses or last available lot in the entire North Shore Town Center, the Beaumont subdivision area. This specific design is, is designed off of, or modeled off of a traditional brownstone townhouse like you would see in New York City. It has the, the raised front entry with the approximately eight steps going into the main first-floor living area, and it also has the recessed stairwell access to a basement living area. The unique feature about the basement access point is that that design allows a lot of natural light to come in and supply this, this lower-level living quarters. This project is located immediately west to a site that includes similar-designed brownstone townhouses that, that Mike Stevens Homes constructed and developed on the property. There are five of those townhouses on that lot. Those townhouses, similar height, similar design, similar shape, similar features. The height of these townhomes, when you look at the grade and elevation of the, of Horizon Drive where this is, the corner of Horizon Drive in Klingman Stone where the first set of townhouses are, that elevation is approximately 912 feet. Going east, sorry, west on Horizon Drive, it descends down towards Thunderhead Road, which is, the townhouse is built by Saddlebrook down there. So the, the descent and elevation from the corner of Horizon Drive in Klingman Stone is approximately 12 feet, so 912 to the end of this last townhouse in the proposed development is down to 900 feet of elevation. And I've included in a letter that I submitted to Mr. Frost, and hopefully that was circulated, there's a roofline elevation that, that's included in there. And based on this elevation, if you track where the existing five townhomes are going west down Horizon Drive, the, the purpose and, and of this design based on this height is it creates a, a uniform roofline, the symmetry that, that starts up at the corner of Horizon Drive in Klingman Stone, and then gradually descends down all the way for the initial project, this proposed project, even into the townhouses that are designed and constructed by Saddlebrook Homes to the, to the Thunderhead. It, it tracks a gentle decline, all in, in a symmetrical line. The confusing thing about this is where I've struggled trying to figure out, all right, how are we measuring this? Where, where is this determined from? And it's the average ground grade plane. Still somewhat confused by exactly what that means, but essentially, that, that can be manipulated, that can be changed. You can, you can change where you, your point of initial measurement is. You can bring in, in soil, in dirt, fill around the, the structure. Some of the townhomes constructed by Saddlebrook, where ours has a recessed access to the basement with the stairwell, their ground, their ground grade is raised, their metal window wells around the basement windows, that's needed for emergency access for fire purposes. But that raises your average ground grade elevation. So essentially, the, the product is still the same height. The building is still the same height. You've just raised your ground grade elevation to where you've shortened, I guess, the overall height of the measurement. So essentially, the same product could be, could be constructed, it's just a matter of changing your, your ground grade elevation.
Thank you very much.
We'd ask that you deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Next person signed up to speak on this, or as, you know, part of this appeal in opposition is Ken Bowman. Mr. Bowman, you please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Ken Bowman, 9515 Bluegrass Road. I work with Mike Stevens Homes, and part of the grade elevation is that the average grade, the units that we're proposing to build are the same units that are to the left of this building site. There are buildings on both sides of this, and the, the, the line of sight for the top elevation will be the same based on the grade elevation. So we're not building a high-rise building that will block any views. The sightline will stay consistent of everything that's built on that street. The topography of the elevation will allow it to do so. But we're simply building, asking to build a fourplex in lieu of a fiveplex that was originally plotted for, so we're, we're lowering the yield based on what our consumers are asking us for. So I have got a, some photographs I'd like to pass out that show you the sightline of the roof elevation, if I may.
You can, Mr. Forrester can bring it to Mr. Johnson, yeah. And then if you want to, go ahead and continue using your time.
So, so basically, what you'll see in those photographs is a, a picture down the rear alley of these units. The building that is closest to you in this photograph is a building that we have already constructed of five units. What you'll see just past that is the vacant lot that we're proposing to build these four units on. In the foreground of this photograph are the units that are built by Saddlebrook, which is in the same development, which are kind and like of our product that we have built throughout the entire community. So I simply point that photograph out, that if you'll look, you can see the elevation change, and the vacant lot that's there, our roofline will be in line of all the other buildings. So the special use was recommended to us. I would just ask that, follow what MPC's staff recommendation, they've recommended. They've been out and visited the site, they're familiar with our plans, and I just ask that you uphold that decision.
Okay, thank you. The third and final person to speak in opposition to this appeal is Mike Stevens. Mr. Stevens, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Yes, thank you. I'm Mike Stevens. I live at 9506 Klingman's Dome Drive, 37922. As you've heard already, a lot of people say this is the best 20-year overnight success story they've ever heard. We have been out there for 20 years, being very consistent, developing this product, and we are down to the last four units. I'm happy to say, in 20 years, I have never come in here and asked for anything. We have been within the guidelines, and I do believe this is as well. I think there's been some misunderstanding on this. The, the planning staff asked me to apply for this special use permit. It, it was granted, it was the staff recommendation, it was 10 to 1 with MPC. As Ken said, I'm kind of a visual guy, but if you look at this front page that we gave you, we're, we're at a drone, and we're on the back of the- you, we're at a drone, and we're on the back of the building looking down the alley. You're not seeing something that's much bigger than anything else. This first one that you see right here is identical to the next one we're asking to build. The actual height is not 41 feet, and I have the blueprints in there, it's 38'4". So it's three foot four higher, but when you look at the grade plane, they're very, very consistent. We are not jumping up to block people's view, and I do, I hate that if it does block someone's view. The address I gave you is one of the original lots in there, I built on it, and then the school came in behind me. I have never seen that as a bad thing. Instead of looking out at the mountains, I'm looking at the school, the playground, buses coming and going, and that's part of this development. Part of this development is new urbanism, and you are in mixed use, and I love it, I'm going to stay there. Fairly soon, I'm going to be the neighbor, not the builder, and I'm looking forward to it. But I will just repeat what Ken said. This was unanimous, well, one vote against at MPC staff. They came out, they spent time, they looked at it. I invited you all to do it, but it was late. I hope you have driven through, and I think you would agree, what most people see when they come in there is a labor of love. This is not cookie cutters, this is not Knox Box. We've got a lot of individuality in this neighborhood. Our intention is not to do harm to anybody. We have four lots left, and then we're finished. It's very, very consistent with what is already in there. I will ask you to look at the last two pages. It's straight off of our blueprints, and it is, by raising the lot line, by raising soils, we can achieve the 35. You don't pull the building down. I think that's what everybody's asking. You don't pull the building down. If you drive through there, the ones that Saddlebrook are building have a lot of backfill against them to achieve the 35, but we like that egress door on that bottom level. The way we've got it set up is, if there's an emergency and somebody's down there, they can leave out that door, but you don't see that, there's a wall in front of it. And so it's a great design, it's a safe design. If we have to do the backfill, we can build this building. We can manipulate the grade line to 35 feet, but as Ken said, then you have to put a window well, you have to put a ladder. If there's an emergency, you're not going to get out that, it's just not the greatest setup. There's several built right now that have that, but this allows us the opportunity to do a very urban look, very functional, and I don't feel like we're inconsistent with what's out there, because quite frankly, I've designed and built everything out there. So we're going to ask you to stand behind MPC's decision and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, you have the opportunity for a two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stevens created the character of this neighborhood. He created the character by promising people who bought townhouses from him that they would have a spectacular mountain view. This townhouse, if you'll take a look at Exhibit 2 to my letter to you all of September 13th, you'll see that the four houses on the right, four are built by Saddlebrook, and then there's a gap. And where this townhouse goes wants to go up to 41 feet, and 41 feet will obstruct the view of these 24 houses that are behind it. Mr. Stevens created the character. The folks paid for their townhouses and their mountain view, and now Mr. Stevens wants to take it away. That's the purpose and the whole reason that we're here. Those that are here in support, please stand. And we've lost some already this evening. We have sickness, and we have support from the 24 folks. I got 43 seconds, that's great. So there is an affidavit from a woman who says, "I am one of those 24 houses." This woman is going to buy the townhouse that Mr. Stevens is building, and because of that, she will get a mountain view, whereas 23 others behind her will not. And so, folks, this is about the character, and you know, Planning Commission may look at character from a regulatory standpoint, but there's only one place that the character of this neighborhood can be argued to have been violated, and that's before you all. You're the ones that have to make that determination.
Mr. Klein, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel members. Mr. Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate what everyone, all the presentations. Mr. Frost, there was a lot of discussion about promises. Can city council enforce private agreements between a developer and a homeowner?
No, they may not, Councilmember Roberto. Definitely sympathetic to what I read in the paperwork that Mr. Klein was kind enough to submit and what was discussed tonight, but actually, the code in Article 1, Section 1.3. D, basically summing up, the city does not enforce private agreements, covenants, or deed restrictions. I'd respectfully submit that the view, while definitely important to Mr. Klein and to Mr. Klein's clients, are not a criteria for city council to consider in making its decisions tonight, rather than the process that the planning commission went through.
Thank you for that clarification. The applicant is requesting that the max height decision be overruled here because it's contrary to the height protections in the Scenic Highway Act. Is the rule, I'm looking at the rule here, but is that rule for application of the Scenic Highway Act that a compatible zone to TC-1 is exempt from the 35-foot height restriction?
Well, that's what the statute says, and TC-1, and Director Brooks can correct me, TC-1 did not come through the recode process. I believe that someone at planning made the determination that the zoning that's in place is comparable. So I think she would be the best person to answer.
Director Brooks?
Certainly, yes. So it does read in the code that the scenic highway does apply to the TC-1 Town Center or similar zoning category. So our evaluation, if anything, in this particular zone goes back to those transition rules that were discussed earlier, so it's 1.4G in the code, and it says, "As the effective date of this code, all previously approved plan districts, which include TC-1, remain in effect and are subject to all plans, regulations, and conditions of their approval."
Okay. So is TC-1 compatible to, or is the current zone compatible to TC-1?
The current zone is of RN3. So we evaluate anything within North Shore Town Center under this previously approved plan district, because it does have a plan that was approved. And so that was one of the reasons that it went through the special use process, to evaluate and increase in height, because we have to go back to those rules. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, so that was my next question, was, you know, this now has to go through a special use examination, and that's what you guys had gone through, is that correct?
That is correct. So we go back to the previous code, and there's a section 3.12G2, which talks about building heights and number of stories, and that maximum is to be determined by the planning commission.
Okay. And, you know, just reiterating what Director Brooks just said, just like we talked about other previous designations we had in the previous code, Town Center is also one that we no longer have. We don't have that one anymore, so that's why we're talking about the transition as well. You know, I've reviewed the material and the planning staff report, and I'm comfortable with their analysis that planning conducted, therefore, I'm going to make a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, a motion to deny the appeal has been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah. Ms. Brooks, so just to follow up on what Councilmember Roberto just brought up, so when I go onto KGIS and I bring up this area, I see the C in parentheses, that's the denotation on the mapping in KGIS, that this has an existing previously approved planned district?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And if it were brought before to remove it, whomever owned the property could apply to remove the planned district designation, but until that's done, it still holds, even though we don't have those zones anymore?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And those come to council, they go through the planning commission, and they come to council?
If they were to get removed and they have a plan that has been approved, it would have to come to council in order for it to be taken off the map.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further lights on, all those in favor of denying this appeal, that's the motion on the floor. All those in favor of denying this appeal, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion to deny carries. Next item.
10C is a resolution approving the appeal by the Overlook Owners Association Incorporated of a decision of the Knoxville-Knox County Planning Commission to uphold a decision of the Design Review Board to grant a certificate of appropriateness for a new primary structure for property located at Zero West Hill Avenue and Zero Locust Street, thereby overturning the decisions of the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board, 6th District.
Okay, counsel, we have three people signed up to speak in favor of this appeal, and three people signed up to speak in opposition. We'll start with the appellant. First is Josh Wright. Mr. Wright, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak to counsel.
Hello, my name is Josh Wright, 608 West Hill Avenue. Please follow along with the packet provided. I'm an architect, contractor, and developer, and I have served on the Design Review Board for five years as the DRB's Urban Design Representative, and as the board's chair for two years. The city council saw that the future of Knoxville is intimately intertwined with reviving downtown as the heart of Knoxville, and has been investing hundreds of millions of dollars in downtown's public spaces, reviving Market Square, Gay Street, the riverfront, our bridges, and even fixing the sewer system so we could use the Tennessee River for recreation. And 17 years ago, this council adopted the Design Review Board's guidelines that ensure any new building that enjoys the benefits of the city's investments also gives back to it by creating a richer, safer pedestrian and public experience that then encourages more development to continue downtown's growth. This council saw and embraced the potential of downtown when many others didn't, and now Knoxville thrives. This is why outside developers are now coming to Knoxville to profit from what this community has built, and I welcome them, but we should just have, just as we have in the past, require all developers to respect the work of this community has done, its history, and its values that are encoded in the Design Review Board's guidelines. This is especially true with larger projects such as this that have real impact on the future of our city. And just to be clear, the guidelines are not simple recommendations, they are the minimum acceptable approach to development. The core values of the guidelines are: protect the pedestrian experience, respect the scale and texture of adjacent buildings, and preserve Knoxville's history. Fundamentally, these guidelines are about ensuring the public room created by Knoxville's buildings and streetscape is safe and engaging. Please turn to Page 2. Using a 60-foot-tall open garage as the streetscape does not protect the pedestrian experience. The applicant has tried to make the point that this part of town will not support commercial development, but it is already there, and the Boulevard District requires active uses at street level and allows for commercial or residential as that use. The developer has instead made the poor choice of putting an open garage at the street level, which will detract from the pedestrian experience and create a much less safe environment than if the Design Review Board's guidelines were followed. They have also made the point that Front Avenue is not worth developing because it is underused anyway, but we can all remember when all of downtown was underused. Just as we revived and improved Gay Street, Central Avenue, and many others, now is the time to show some respect to this avenue that spans over half of downtown's waterfront and connects into the hundreds of residential units at Maplehurst. Front Avenue alone is worth our concern, but let's look further. Every yellow square shows the significant development potential of Front Avenue, Neyland, and the river. Proper steps now will help push development that connects downtown to Front Avenue and Neyland Drive, and thus to the Tennessee River, a connection that every master plan the city has developed over the last 100 years has recommended. That is why this site is in the Boulevard District, to require this connection. We cannot let this project that treats Front Avenue like an alley set the precedent for all of this potential development. It's easy to see that this building's massive monolithic garage, base, and tower does not extend the pedestrian scale and richly textured fabric of downtown to respect its neighboring buildings. It is even out of scale and contrast with the adjacent historic Henley Street Bridge. Please turn to Page 3. All of our master plans and guidelines expressly state to protect the view of this beautiful historic bridge. Norman Foster, the great bridge architect, said, "Every bridge is a poem stretched across a river, a symphony of steel and stone. The way Henley Street Bridge springs from the south waterfront bank, makes its crossing of the Tennessee River, and then ties into downtown's landscape, is the fullness of this bridge's poem. And the proposed building will cut off Henley Street's bridge poetry at its last stanza by blocking its arch and abutment." Our boards pretend on the accuracy of the applicant's renderings, but they are not accurate. If you take the time to compare the renderings to the submitted plans, you can see this. The gravel drive is not Front Avenue. Please turn to Page 4. As you can see, the black lines show the building as is shown in the rendering. The red lines show the reality of the building's location in relationship to the Henley Street Bridge. The arch of the bridge and its abutments will be blocked by this building. Look, everyone actually wants a project here, but this is a critical location for Knoxville that must be treated properly and very seriously. This project does not honor the investments and work made by this community to make this specific location worth developing, nor does it meet the basic requirements of the DRB guidelines. Don't let this project's poor design decision stifle any potential of Knoxville's continued development. I'm asking you to reject this design. Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak on Item 10C in favor of the appeal is Kathy Goldsby. Ms. Goldsby, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Goldsby, and I live at 608 West Hill Avenue. I'm speaking in opposition of the Hill and Locust Project on behalf of many neighbors, and not just those in my building. I want to share my disappointment in the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, and place my hope that you, on city council, will uphold the guidelines your predecessors voted into law. When my husband and I bought our home in late 2020, we did our homework. We understood that a multifamily development would be built where vacant property was located. We were assured, however, that any project would be in accordance with the Design Review Board's guidelines, and that the neighborhood would have discussions and interactions with developers during the process. One of our neighbors helped create the guidelines for the DRB, and presented these guidelines for your predecessors' approval following an extensive public process. They're not suggestions to be tossed aside if the development is one in current favor. They go beyond zoning requirements, yet these have been stretched beyond recognition to facilitate a desired outcome. That is not good process, and certainly not good government. Just take one guideline. The proposed project should complement the mass and scale of adjacent buildings. In their initial presentation, the developers cited Neyland Stadium and the First Tennessee Tower, and they referenced the City-County Building, just the kind of waterfront development the guidelines were designed to prevent, one that separates downtown from the Tennessee River. The creation of the Design Review Board was for the exact purpose of maintaining the integrity of downtown neighborhoods and the fabric of downtown in the waterfront. Every resident of Knoxville expects full and fair public process for any project. That is most certainly true for something of this never-before-seen mass and scale and broad impact. Can you imagine a 25-home neighborhood with a 290-unit subdivision being planned literally on top of it, with no meeting with the developer, and no interaction between anyone at the city with the neighborhood? A city official, Ms. Justice, took the time to inform the Planning Commission during the appeal hearing that the city supported the project, yet to this day, we have received zero communication from anyone at the city about this design. This design is wholly inappropriate. It fails to meet the letter and spirit of almost every guideline, many glaringly so. Out of seven guidelines, 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 2A, 2B, and 2C, only one complies, one. This design will dwarf a downtown block, cause massive traffic issues, and eliminate the downtown view for anyone coming into Knoxville from the Henley Bridge, and block the water view and mountains for much of downtown. The view for people coming into Knoxville from the south, I might add, will be a massive multi-story parking garage facing a boulevard, one of the many guidelines ignored. I don't have to remind those of you on city council that process matters. From the time of the developer's DRB workshop in November of 2022, From the time of the developer's DRB workshop in November of 2022 and back-channel communications and meetings, it was more than a full year before any member of the public was informed about anything. And then it was a hush-hush invitation to a meeting in a small room, and the invitation literally stated to not tell too many because the room was small. In this so-called meeting, the developer actually said, "If you don't like it, you should be more involved in the process. Well, here we are, part of the public process." This hush-hush meeting was eight days before the DRB meeting in April. The project had already been placed on the DRB website. There was no information, let alone discussion, with the immediate neighborhood or the public at large. I'm asking you to help me understand when and where will be the healthy discussion and evaluation, and when and where will constructive community discussion be held? Because so far, we've been afforded five minutes with a hard stop at previous meetings. We want buildings developed to provide needed housing in appropriate scale, but not one that is doomed to be huge because the property owners combined lots and the developer has a need to sink massive capital gains into their project to benefit from the Opportunity Zone tax breaks. We are against this development that will be a huge 100-year mistake. Please do not let this development be your legacy. Once it starts, you will no longer be able to stop it or reject future inappropriate designs. Thank you for your time. I am hopeful that you will listen to the community and reject this development.
Okay, next person is Daniel Sanders. Mr. Sanders, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Daniel Sanders, 920 Volunteer Landing, Knoxville, 37915. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. I apologize for my voice. I've come down with a cough in the last couple of days. You have ample opportunity and basis to deny this appeal, send us back to the Design Review Board for reconsideration. My role here is to bring attention to serious concerns about the fairness of the process surrounding consideration of this development. My clients don't feel like there was any genuine effort to involve the community on input in this project. They feel like decisions have been made behind closed doors, and the community concerns have been largely disregarded. They feel cut out of the process, although they own a budding property to this particular development. Recently, we discovered that the mayor's office appears to have been engaged as sort of a project manager for this development, with the mayor's, one of the mayor's directors, Rebecca Jane Justice, even speaking and supported the project before the Planning Commission, a body whose members the mayor appoints. It was at that same meeting where one of the Planning Commissioners widely dismissed my client's concerns, accusing them of being NEMBs, as if their concerns were simply an attempt to stop the project. But none of those objections have been raised by my clients. They have consistently asked only for a better design that meets all of Knoxville's guidelines. What we are witnessing here is more than just a lack of transparency. It's a process that seems to favor one side while silencing or even attacking the other. The integrity of these proceedings is at stake, and I urge the council to take a step back and ensure that fairness, not favoritism, guides the decision-making process moving forward. It's in this context that I raise two objections. The first is to ex parte communications had by members of this council in connection with this application under consideration tonight. I provided you with an affidavit of Tom Goldsby, which outlines his observations of several meetings between individual council members and developer representatives Rick Blackburn and Gary Rogers. These meetings occurred on the project site and outside of the formal review process. Therefore, they raised significant issues that must be addressed before you decide this matter tonight. I have great respect for the work of this council, and I want to emphasize that this is not a personal criticism. However, because this council is sitting in administrative capacity, private communications with developers, even unintended, raise questions about fairness and due process. It's well-established that parties of administrative proceedings are entitled to be heard by impartial decision-makers. Tennessee courts are clear that ex parte communications must be avoided in administrative matters to ensure due process of law. We have photos. One taken, one taken of Janet Testerman, Councilmember Testerman, met with these project representatives on the project site. We also have a photo of Councilmember Ryder, meeting with project representatives on the project site. These photographs are attached to your, to the letter that I handed out to you tonight. Mr. Goldsby's affidavit also outlines he witnessed, that he witnessed Councilmember Smith meeting with project members onsite. The second objection that I would raise tonight is that the mayor's office appears to be a project manager for this development. We have obtained in public records that appear to show Rebecca Jane Justice aiding this project along. And we would draw your attention again to the fact that Ms. Justice appeared at the Planning Commission and expressed this, this administration's approval of this project. With due respect, this administration, the mayor's office, under, under the charter, has all of the administrative authority of the county. The mayor is presiding over this meeting. To have a director in the mayor's office, project managing a development, is a violation of due process, and we object. So, to ensure transparency, we respectfully request at a minimum that all city records related to this project be made available to my clients at no cost for review, that written ex parte communications sent or received by this council or the mayor's office be made an official record of this matter, that a memorandum summarizing any oral ex parte communications between council and developer.
Oh, your time's up, sorry, Mr. Sanders, thank you.
You will, you will.
Mr. Sanders, your time's up.
You will like me to finish my objection.
Your five minutes is up.
Will you allow me to finish?
You'll have a two-minute opportunity to do a rebuttal at the conclusion. Council members, the person, we have three people signed up to speak in opposition to this appeal. We'll start in the order they signed up. Ben Hudgens is first. Mr. Hudgens, if you could state your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Ben Hudgens with Brock Hudgens Architects. Address is 530 Mean Street, Suite 105. That's Atlanta, Georgia, 30318. I'm glad to be with you tonight to discuss our project at Hill and Locust. I'd like to provide a quick overview of the process that led us here tonight, which is also outlined in the packet that you all should have in hand. We believe that this process, while admittedly challenging at times, has ultimately made the project better. On page one, you'll see that the project began with an informal DRB workshop on November 16th, 2022. This was an introduction to the building program, massing and design character. DRB provided generally positive feedback, but suggested that the massing specifically along Hill Avenue should be studied, keeping with the scale of the adjacent buildings. Also, extensive discussion about the riverfronting portion of the building and its relation to the parking garage. On page two, you'll see that the next meeting was a neighborhood meeting held April 9th, 2024, attended by 28 participants. Neighborhood group was complimentary of the Hill Avenue facade, but voiced several concerns, including traffic congestion and construction noise. The group was also focused on the building massing and height, concerned that the building would block their views. As one participant summed it up, quote, "Great for Knoxville, not great for us." Page three is the first formal DRB presentation. This occurred later that month, in April, at which time we presented a refined scheme reducing the height along Hill Avenue by four stories. DRB provided positive feedback, but suggested that we further study the parking garage with input from the community, which led to second neighborhood meeting, you'll see on page four. That was held on May 1st of this year, per the request of the DRB. We held a workshop for general feedback on building design, but also provided four distinct garage design approaches, had neighbors vote on which they preferred, also heard suggestions to increase the building height and mass along Locust Street in exchange for lowering the mass along Henley, Henley Street, which we continue to study. On page five of your packet, you'll notice second DRB presentation, that was in May of this year. Design team presented a redesigned building with 10-foot stepbacks along all street frontages, reduced tower height on the riverfronting portion of the building, a reduction of the garage height by one floor. This was a result of pushing the building down by an entire story to better engage Front Avenue. New building design along Front Avenue that accommodated future retail space, taller ceilings, concrete frame construction that, at the time, retail becomes viable along Front that the building could accommodate. This also improved pedestrian experience along Front. Also studied new garage approach and presented that to the DRB. The DRB suggested further refinements to the garage, pushing height, you know, more height from Henley to Locust and further activation at Front Avenue. On page six, you'll see the, the third DRB presentation, that was on June 20th, where we presented the latest building redesigned to include additional massing stepbacks and height reduction along Henley Street, a new penthouse expression to provide a more clear base metal-top tripartite composition to reinforce the design guidelines while further reducing the perceived building massing. We also included new interior program in an artist workshop, bike shop, a long Front Avenue near the intersection at Locust, as well as a new garage screening designed to reduce the perceived height of the garage and the visual impact. The DRB agreed the massing refinements, the new garage screening, and the front activation were a major improvement, voted unanimously to approve the project with an 8-0 vote. Page seven, DRB decision was appealed to the Planning Commission last month, where the project was reviewed further. After a thoughtful discussion with clarifications provided by the design team and development team, the commission voted unanimously to deny the appeal of the Overlook Owners Association with a vote of 14 to 0, upholding the decision of the DRB. In conclusion, we're really excited about this project. We're excited about what it means for the future of Knoxville, and we truly appreciate the feedback we've gotten through the process. It has undoubtedly made the project better. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next person on this item is Patrick Casson. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record, you'll have up to five minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Patrick Casson. My address is 505 Cortlandt Street, Suite 6, Atlanta, Georgia, 30308. And I serve as Vice President and Regional Development Partner for Woodfield Development, a national multifamily developer that focuses creating best-in-class residential rental communities. Together with our partners at Origin Development Partners, we are the ownership team, ownership team behind the project at Hill and Locust. The site has been undeveloped for decades. We are poised to give it life. I want to sincerely thank each of you for taking the time this evening to hear our response to this appeal filed by the Overlook Owners Association. As our architect Ben Hudgens from Brock Hudgens has stated, our project has undergone extensive review, including numerous meetings with the neighborhood, the Design Review Board, and the Planning Commission. We are confident that the process has ultimately resulted in a stronger, more thoughtful project. The collaboration throughout the process has worked, and we are all better for it. It was determined by the DRB and the Planning Commission that the project meets the applicable guidelines. Tonight, we respectfully ask that you unanimously deny the appeal brought forward by the Overlook Owners Association. We thank you for your support in the development of what we believe will be an important project that enriches and engages the downtown community. Our project will not only enhance the aesthetic of downtown, but also contribute to the community by creating jobs, providing additional housing options, and including, excuse me, and incorporating sustainable building practices to ensure we're improving the environment and community for future generations. Our project will feature an affordable component, which we view as vital to this great city. We have a track record of delivering projects that create win-wins for everyone. Our project will become an essential component of the broader vision for a dynamic and flourishing downtown. Our aim is to create a space where both residents and businesses can prosper, and we believe this development will act as a driving force for sustained growth and enhancement in the community. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Thank you for being stewards of this tremendous city. We can't get, we can't wait to get to work. We are happy to answer any questions you may have about our project. At this point, I'd like to introduce our zoning council, Taylor Forrester with Long, Raggsdale Waters, to further address the details of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Forrester, you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Taylor Forrester, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919. Here on behalf of the developer for the project at the property. As you're aware, this property's has a DK zoning, is under the DK zone, has a split zoning, the DKG, which is the grid zone, and the DKB, which is the Boulevard sub-district. Much like the other zoning ordinance, the DK zoning ordinance sets forth dimensional and design standards that are, that are required to be followed. The DK zoning ordinance provides that any new construction is subject to review and approval by the Design Review Board. The Design Review Board's role is to foster attractive and harmonious development in downtown Knoxville. The Design Review Board uses the, the design guidelines to review these downtown developments and proposed projects. The DK zoning ordinance in, in addressing, that is, the downtown design guidelines expressly states that these guidelines are not intended to bring uniformity in design or approach or to require specific materials be used. These guidelines are to be applied in a flexible manner to meet the needs for the development. They are not a rigid set of rules that are to be applied, unlike you have with your zoning ordinance, with your dimensional setback requirements that are mandatory and required to be followed under the zoning ordinance. The design guidelines are not that. Rather, they are a set of principles used to guide development. In fact, as further evidence of the flexible nature of the design guidelines is that the DK zoning ordinance expressly states that the DRB can even waive these guidelines if they are not appropriate for the development or feasible based on the property, the site conditions, the constraints, such as topography. As Mr. Hudgens addressed, this has been a lengthy process. It's been a very involved process. If you've, if you've ever been to a, a DRB meeting, those are lengthy. They, they are fruitful with discussion, they, a lot of, a lot of study and, you know, at times, criticism over, over design choices. But that whole process has, has manifested into, to a great project. The project initially submitted, we were happy with, but going through that lengthy process, listening to those comments, listening to those, the architects, other design professionals that are on the Design Review Board that, that review these projects monthly, you know, went back to the drawing board, incorporated these revisions and those suggestions, and, you know, that, that took several meetings. And finally, at, at the third meeting, again, lengthy discussion, lengthy considerations, even with the opposition speaking, speaking against the project and the, and the design, it was a unanimous approval by the Design Review Board. Same thing when it was appealed to Planning Commission. Again, discussion, opposition, and several, there are even design professionals on the Planning Commission that commented on, on the project, and again, a unanimous approval. Here we are again at the, at the next level, and we are still think that this is a great project, think it's, it's been vetted, it's been studied, it's been reviewed, redesigned, that it meets the requirements of the, of the design guidelines, the intent of the design guidelines. It was analyzed by planning staff, Ms. Crockett with Planning Staff, who, one of her, her roles is advising from a staff perspective, reviewing plans and submitting reports to the, to the Design Review Board and, and making recommendations and identifying how or how not certain plans meet the design guidelines. Ms. Crockett set forth in her plan, see guidelines that were applicable to this project and how this project met them, and made a recommendation that the Design Review Board should approve the project, subject to, I believe, four or five conditions on there, which, which were satisfactory to us. Considering the end, the objective review by Planning Staff, Ms. Crockett, her recommendation of approval, the objective review, and consideration by the Design Review Board and their unanimous approval, same with Planning Commission, its unanimous approval, we would ask that those, that approval be upheld and that the, the appeal filed by the Overlook be... filed by the Overlook be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. The appellant has the opportunity for up to a two-minute rebuttal.
My microphone may not have been on when I was up here earlier, but you guys have issues here. You have ex parte communications that we know about. You have some I'm sure that we don't know about. Before this body considers this, we need to have the records of City Council and the mayor's office connected to this project. We need to know the extent of the communications. We need to know the extent of the project management that was done by the mayor's office for this project. We need to know if there are any oral communications. We need to know the extent of it. Those have to be disclosed to us. We are entitled to that before you make a decision. And we're entitled to a response to that. So when those records are provided to us and they're made a part of this proceeding and we have an opportunity to respond to that and to the extent of it, we expect the opportunity to respond to it. Until that happens, this body is in jeopardy of making a decision that is subject to reversal under due process. And so simply to ensure that the process remains fair and transparent for all the parties involved, in some cases, recusal may be even called for. And so I've got 45 seconds left. Do you want to say anything, Josh?
You can't yield your time. It's one person only.
Okay, well, those are the grounds that we object on. The speakers before, you know, Josh is an architect. He's well aware of the guidelines and gave you guys plenty of grounds to deny this application outright. If you move forward and you deny our appeal, we have concerns about the ex parte communications and we expect those to be resolved before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. That concludes the people who are signed up to speak to this. I just did want to mention, you know, Mr. Sanders, as an experienced attorney, knows that at any time he can file a public records request with Eric Reeland in our communications office. We receive and process them all the time. He's welcome to do that. We have not received any such request. So just wanted to. Well, then it has been processed.
I'll address that too, since you mentioned that. We filed two public.
Oh, then it has been, we've responded and we're waiting your response back.
Well, we filed two public records requests. The first such request was to garner some of this information. The estimate of what it would cost, the estimate of cost was exorbitant. And in fact.
Well, we have standard.
Over $8,000.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We have, you know, standards that we follow that are consistent for everybody who asks those questions.
We hope you follow the process in this.
Also, just given a couple of questions or matters that Mr. Sanders raised, I wanted to ask Mr. Frost or Mr. Mills if you could explain to counsel the definition of ex parte, what that means and what it doesn't mean.
Thank you, Mayor. I looked at Mr. Sanders' letter and the affidavit that he included with it and my friend, Mr. Sanders. In the affidavit, it recited events between December 2020 and January 22 and an event in January 2023. It does include something about council member Testerman and that's one of the photographs on the board and provided to counsel tonight. But as everyone knows, council member Testerman is no longer a member of this body. From looking at the packet, it looks like Ben Hudgens filed this application with the DRB around March 29th, 2024, which is some 14 months after the last event listed in the affidavit. Then it started to go through a process. You know, we didn't know, we being anyone, know how it was going to prevail at the, who was going to prevail at the Design Review Board. And it was on the agenda for a few meetings here, I think as Mr. Forrester maybe mentioned. And then we didn't know if it was, the decision of the DRB was going to be appealed to planning. And then we didn't know who was going to prevail at planning in August. And we didn't know whether or not it was going to be appealed to City Council. There was no appeal or challenge before City Council until Mr. Sanders filed his appeal on August 22nd, 2024. As members of council know, when I learn of an appeal coming forward, I pick up the phone or I may call people and say, hey, items, I mean, for example, items 10A, 10B and 10C tonight. Council is acting in a quasi judicial capacity and I ask you to please refrain from communications with interested parties. I made that every time this has been on this agenda. I've made it for the thing that was on 10A tonight. So now this morning, I was forwarded a copy of an email that was sent directly to all nine members of City Council from a person on Mr. Sanders' side and the side of his client. One may think that that's an ex parte communications. In discussions I found, I was told that Mr. Sanders himself sent an email to council before the appeal was filed. That too might be seen as ex parte under how Mr. Sanders is discussing the situation tonight. I do want to specifically because Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Ryder are specifically mentioned in this affidavit tonight. I'd like to ask both of you some questions. Vice Mayor Smith, when you met with the people mentioned in Mr. Goldsby affidavit in, were you January 2023? Is that what? When you met with them, did you make any commitment, one way or the other, about this project that's on the agenda tonight?
No.
Are you acting impartially on this matter tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder, when you met with these people as alluded to in the affidavit of Mr. Goldsby in 2020, did you make any commitment, one way or another, about this project that's on the agenda tonight?
According, yeah. I would just correct you, Mr. Frost, and say 2022.
Thank you.
According to Mr. Goldsby. No, I did not. And I'm happy to talk about what I believe I did say, although I didn't take notes. But I have some recollection.
Are you acting impartially tonight?
I am, and I have not participated in conversations with many people across town who have tried to engage me in conversation with this project.
And Mr. Sanders correctly corrected the mayor. He did file an open records request. And then he, for the emails, which I think he's talking about tonight. And then he amended it to go to specifically to the emails of RJ Justice. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Smith, Ms. Parker.
I did want to clarify an issue that was raised about the records request and the fee that was quoted to you. I did not hear the number. If you could come back up, I would be interested in hearing that. And if you can.
We requested all records of City Council related to this matter and we're quoted a figure of $8,000 to obtain those records.
Mr. Frost has a clarification on that.
The initial request by Mr. Sanders, not only did it include every single member of City Council, it included former council member Testerman and it included phrases such as Hill Avenue. And it was essentially a request over all city emails from all city employees. Because if you do a search for Hill Avenue, you will find, for example, if there is an ambulance or a fire truck or a police car dispatched to Hill Avenue. So there was a lot of conversations and Mr. Sanders and I had a discussion about that. And the state law allows the city and me, as City Council's attorney, to provide one hour free of research for this. But once you get past that point, you are entitled to charge as provided to state law. And both I and I believe Mr. Reeland told Mr. Sanders that upfront about this is, there was a call with Mark Parker, head of IS for the city. And Mr. Parker talked about all the steps that were going to have to be done by an employee in his office to do it. So Mr. Sanders, he asked for what he thought was important and that's fine. It was a large request and the city, in my opinion, responded with an appropriate, made an appropriate response.
And how do we reach an $8,000 estimate?
You look at the time involved, Mr. Parker. I can't remember exactly. I think he was going to have to dedicate one city employee to do that full-time for a period of time.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. When we changed that cost to the public for public records request, there was a promise made that this would actually make some requests cheaper to the public. And that has not been what the experience has been.
If I may.
Please, I follow up.
We submitted an identical request for all Planning Commission records and DRB records to the Planning Commission and received a response to that request for no charge.
Thank you for that. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is this. This project has come up before in terms of a pilot. I don't know why that has not been discussed. But I have discussed this project previously with the developer in terms of potential of a pilot. I have not just talked about the design and all of those requirements. But it would make sense to me that my colleagues had spoken to the developer two years ago because this issue came up around a pilot. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so I've met with lots of people. I've met with developers before. I've met with neighborhood groups on street corners and coffee shops all over the place, so happy to talk about it. My recollection of this meeting, I met with them, I believe during a lunch break during the workday. I'd have to look at, it was December 20th, so maybe it was actually break from work. And if I remember correctly, somebody, not Rick Blackburn, obviously I know who he is, which I have no emails from Mr. Blackburn. I just looked, I have no text messages. Most of my text messages, when I query Blackburn, it's, did you see another politician's tweet or something with that same name? So no text messages with me and Mr. Blackburn. They asked at some point, you know, would I meet them out there? I met them out there and I believe the other guy was from South Carolina. And it was like, hey, this is a property that we've wanted to develop for a while. And other people have tried to and projects have fallen through. And this group from out of town is looking to develop this site. And I said, uh huh, uh huh. And then I'm like, have you talked to the neighbors? It looks like in the picture maybe I have papers in my hands, so maybe they gave me papers. But I took them back and put them in a stack because we get a lot of paperwork in it. Wasn't anything coming. So, and as we can see from this, I'm not even sure what the current design is because it's gone to, I do know that it's gone to Design Review Board, I think like three plus times, I believe, from headlines and compass mostly. But anyway, I asked them if they had spoken with neighbors. I talked to them, you know, they said they were going to build on the side and they were going to build out front. And I asked them if they had talked with the neighborhood, the neighbors in the building there adjoining. And I gave them suggestions. I couldn't tell you specifically what they were. They were talking about amenities and I said, you know, this is going to block the view and change things for people here. You might talk to them about, you know, what amenities do they get? Do you, and would you consider letting them have access to the amenities? You know, I think I asked them what they were planning on doing and it was all very vague because they didn't have a plan, to my recollection. But I have very little recollection of it. I did not attend any or watch any of the downtown review board meetings. I don't think I really read the compass articles, no offense, Scott or anyone who was reporting on that. And there are definitely people around me who discussed it. Or people would ask my opinion. And I did have someone contact me to give me their opinion a few days ago. And I said, I'm sorry, I cannot talk to you about this because it is an appeal and we are not allowed to talk. And they said, are you sure? And I said, hold on, let me check my email from my attorney. We have three appeals in the agenda and I want to make sure it's all three appeals. So I said, indeed, Mr. Frost's email says appeals 10A, 10B and 10C. So not all of them are quasi judicial. And so that's pretty much it. What I will say is I checked to see if I had an email from Mr. Goldsby. Like, did he reach out to me? Because my apologies, I don't know who that is. But I do have an email from Kathleen Goldsby. But to my knowledge, if someone had called and said, hey, will you come meet me so I can tell you my side of the story? I don't believe I ignored any requests to do that, but I am certainly happy to do that. Mostly, it's been people from outside commenting on what they're hearing or seeing or reading about the downtown review board. And I have specifically not paid attention to that and not engaged in those conversations because it's been pretty contentious and I anticipated it would come here as an appeal. So as a matter of, I feel quite ignorant about this project. They did say the reason they were meeting with us is like, hey, we're going to do this project and we anticipate that we're going to file for a pilot. And at that point, when you meet with somebody on an empty lot like that, you're like, okay. Like, I have no facts, I have no figures, I have nothing. You've got to go through the process. So not much to say. And as far as the request for records, I don't have any text messages about this. I don't have any emails. I've not responded to anyone. I have gotten a lot of emails from people in the building that were expressing opposition to downtown review boards. And again, I did not reply to them and I did not engage. So I hope that answers and clarifies any questions.
Councilmember McKenzie? Okay, Councilmember Fugit, I think, was next. And then we'll go to Vice Mayor Smith.
Hot potato, hot potato. Nobody wants to talk. So I want to actually talk about the project rather than who talked to who. So I am trying to get some clarification. A, what iteration of things am I actually looking at? Is the thing that I got from the developer today, the final design that has been approved by the Design Review Board? Because quite frankly, there are so many pictures. This isn't accurate, this isn't accurate, don't believe this. What is approved?
Mr. Hudgens, could you answer her question, please?
Sure, I'd be glad to. If you look in your package on page.
Is this my, are you talking about this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Page Spiral Bound.
Spiral Bound thing that I was given tonight. Is this the last iteration that got approved?
It is, that's correct. And if you look on page six, DRB presentation number three, that is the final iteration that was approved by DRB. There have been no changes since then, so.
June 20th.
That's correct.
It's the last thing, okay. It's the last thing, okay. So my, so now I have, I've got a couple more minutes. So here's my question. Front Street, I will just say, way back in the dark ages, I ran this process called Nine Counties One Vision, and it talked about visioning for downtown. And it really did talk about reactivating the waterfront, and that this building itself is one of the most harmful things we've done to reactivate our, our riverfront, because it put up a big barrier to do that. So a lot of effort has been made to reengage the waterfront. And UT now wants to reengage on the waterfront. So hearing this Front Street issue and the Boulevard and the walkability, that really is important to me, because if it's connecting to the university. So is this design the one that actually does that?
Yes, I think the best place to look is on page seven. The image at the bottom, this shows from the intersection at Locust and Front.
You didn't number the pages, so you better hold it up.
Okay, is it the one at 820?
That's correct, 88?
808, 24?
That's right. So if you'll notice the picture on the bottom, this is the intersection at Locust, which you all know is really, really steep, where it meets Front. We've activated that edge. Remember that you've got Front, where we've got sidewalks and streetscape and street trees. But then we still have Locust that comes between Nealon and Front. So it's like street, street, street. It's, it's, it's kind of congested there. But again, we've, we've done everything we can to, to provide activation there, sidewalks, streetscapes, to support the future vision. Once retail is truly viable, then that ground floor has been set up to accommodate any sort of retail uses in the future. So the initial use, as I mentioned before, artist workshop space. We have some of our residential amenities down there to help activate, but ideally, that becomes retail storefronts in the future.
And then, just trying to follow the bouncing ball of all the different designs. This last design, where the building is not flat across the front with variations, that is in response to some of the Design Review Board's concern that it, that breaks up the monolithic huge mass? Is that...
That's right. So based on the Design Review Board feedback, neighborhood feedback, as well as the, the planning staff, the, the step backs occur both above the parking, the residential, at the top of the residential. The massing is shifted around to create separate nodes in the building and help bring down the scale.
And then, lastly, the render, the design that you're talking about that showed Front Street and shows where the, the Henley Street Bridge is, that looks like that does not cut through the center of the arch of... And one of the pictures we saw before did. So is that because originally the thought was to bring this forward closer to Nealon Drive, and now this is pushed back?
No, what I would say is, the, the view that we were just looking at shows the correct relationship to the bridge. We resurveyed and refotographed and re-laser measured the exact location, just to confirm that. So that is the latest and most accurate.
Councilmember Fugit, I'm going to go to one of your colleagues, since that's five minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, I'm good.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to talk about the project as well. Before I do, you know, we talk to developers and residents and listen. That's our job, so, you know. Concerns that have been raised border on inferred accusation to me. And ironically enough, my meeting was about five minutes in of introductions before I was joined by one of the residents. And my first comment to that resident was, now you're in the meeting. So there's a lot, you know, I've even heard directly from residents at, at Vestival. I think I met one of the residents. And people, and, and they told me how they felt, and politely moved on to the next vendor. So just word of caution, like, we're all voted on, elected, and paid to listen well to people, and that's what we do. And we are all very clear with the lines of communication. So I'll, I'll leave the rest before Mr. Frost critiques me. It seems to me that the matter is, the crux of the matter is related to activating pedestrian development on Front. I think that Mr. Wright mentioned that. I think it's important. This is, this will take away a tailgate spot that was dear to me, but I appreciate that there's better use of pedestrian action on that little road. Talk, if you can, since you're the applicant, how did that retail change from start to what we have in front of us? Quickly, please.
Yep, okay, I'll be, I'll be brief. Originally, the parking garage was, was elevated above Front. It did not connect. There was no vehicular access, only from Hill Avenue. The, the DRB was concerned about having a blank facade at Front. So we took the entire garage, we pushed everything down, so that it's at grade with Front, right? So that lets us get the streetscapes in. We studied retail viability to see if we could introduce retail in that space from the beginning. I'll let Patrick touch on this, but it was, it's not a viable retail storefront street yet, but it will be. So we designed 20-foot floor-to-floor height down there, concrete frame construction, stub ups to allow retail when the time is right.
To the layperson's eye, there's retail on the bottom, whether it's, Patrick almost saved us both some time. I think I know what you're going to say. To the layperson's eye, there's retail on the ground for future development and activation. Then there's parking guarded by design. And then there's residential above. The other crux of the matter, I think, that I really appreciated from the residents and what I read and, you know, and excerpts from Malin Sims or whomever, was the change from the monolithic, one-size-big block to this three-dimensional design. Talk about that and why did you do that?
Sure, so for several reasons. Most importantly, we pushed the mass of the, of the building around to do a couple of things. One, introduce step backs, so that from pedestrian scale, the, the building felt smaller, less massive. There was a lot of conversation about the building as it relates to Locust, which is not very pedestrian-oriented, and Henley, which, which is more pedestrian-oriented. So a good portion of the mass throughout the process shifted from Henley to Locust. So again, that creates more variation in the rooftops. And then lastly was, one of the big steps at the end was introducing this penthouse expression, this attic story, which further reduces the, the visual impact at those top floors and provides more interest. So you do truly have a base that steps back to a middle that steps back to a top, again, supporting the, the design guidelines and the tripartite composition of the building.
Okay, thank you. And just one more, you know, the, the importance of guidelines and a review board is to take some subjectivity out of it. There are a lot of critiques of recent development in South Knoxville, particularly along the waterfront. There are a lot of people who had, you know, their views blocked in the recent decade there. And I think the good thing about guidelines and the reason that I think this process has worked well is that I don't get to subjectively put my finger on the scale of developments. And I don't, I'm not qualified for that, and that's not my expertise. But I think that this meets the standards, and I appreciate the concern of the residents and the trade-off and the consequence. I do appreciate that, but I think that this meets the standards.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll also say that I met with two people, but I think it was maybe early 2022 or late 2021. And at the time, they were just talking about the lots. I don't know if they'd actually purchased them, and that they had, they were having, making plans to do development there and potentially some residences. And the first thing I remember saying is, well, what is that going to do to the view of people who live in the existing building? And they said, well, that's, that's yet to be determined, but it will probably be impeded. And so that was really the extent of my conversation. There was no additional follow-up. But while you guys are standing there, I do have a couple of questions. How many meetings did you have with the residents? I think that there's only one that's referenced here in this packet. Were there multiple meetings?
Sure, we had multiple meetings, we had two meetings.
You had two meetings?
So we, we attempted to run an open forum at which we were kind of shouted explicit at. And so the second time, we ran more of a, of a survey process in which we had kind of stations where, where residents could share their feedback. That, that one had significantly less attendance than the first one.
Okay, and all of these were, what, this year? One in 2022, or are they both in 22? Or did you have one in 23 and then one in 22?
That's right. So there's one in 2020, they were both this year. I'm so sorry, they were both this year. One in April, and then the second one in, we got to get the date right here, sorry, in May.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And those are, those are, sorry, those are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, and those are all of my questions for you. Design Review Board, someone had actually, and I'm not sure who to direct this question to, if it's RJ or someone else, but someone that was at the podium actually identified a couple of codes that were violated. I think it was 1A, B, C, and D. Can you or anyone who can speak to any of those? Or what in particular that's been stated does violate the design guidelines?
Ms. Justice, can you speak to that?
I, I think I would probably ask Amy or Lindsay to speak to the design guidelines, as that was discussed in DRB.
Director Brooks, or is Ms. Crockett here?
Yes, Ms. Crockett is here. Let me just make sure that we understand what the question is. So the question is, did they, in staff's opinion, did they violate the design guidelines?
Were there any, were there any design standards that were violated? Some, one of the speakers actually gave some numbers. I think it was 1A, B, C, and D, and I'm not, don't quote me on that, but that's, that's what I captured in my notes.
No, I don't believe so, but I'm going to ask Ms. Crockett to come up here, if you don't mind. Is, is there any of that from the staff's report? I'm just going to pull up the staff report real quick. Otherwise, it wouldn't have been recommended for approval to the Design Review Board. Absolutely, so the design guidelines that were referenced are...
Ms. Crockett, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Lindsey Crockett, 400 Main Street.
And you're the staff person, you know, what's your role?
Yes, I'm the principal planner and design review program manager. I'm a staff planner for the Design Review Board.
Thank you.
So the design guidelines, 1A, B, and C, include maintain a pedestrian-scaled environment from block to block, foster air circulation and sunlight penetration around new buildings. Buildings may be designed with open space, as allowed under existing DK zoning, or buildings may be stepped back on upper floors with lower floors meeting the sidewalk edge. So in the determination of the Design Review Board, both of those design guidelines were met. And then the 1C is use building materials, cornice lines, signs, and awnings of a human scale in order to reduce the mass of buildings as experienced at the street level. So there was an extensive amount of discussion about the building experience at the street level. That resulted in the refinements to the additional transparency, windows and doors along that street level. And then we haven't seen any associated signs or awnings yet.
And when we, when we talk about street level... Let me see what page that looks like. Stay with me. Okay, so when we talk about, about street, are there two street levels in this design? One at the bottom, where you, it looks like you have parking and maybe some retail? And then it looks like there was a picture that showed something street level closer to Henley, perhaps?
Right, so if you, if you look on this page, you're right about the front avenue-street experience, which is shown. And then this image, which you see, the, the brick portion of the building, is up at the intersection of Hill and Locust. So again, that's up at the top of the hill, and the, the front av portion is down at the bottom of the hill, addressing the, the streetscapes on, on both front edges.
Ms. McKenzie, Councilmember McKenzie, we'll move on to your colleagues, and then we can come back to you if you have further questions. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, Ms. Crockett, my question is also for you. I'm not as familiar with the Downtown Review guidelines, but I believe the appeal before us is, did the Downtown Review Board properly apply the guidelines? The, the guidelines that I'm most familiar with are historic zoning, and I know in, particularly in Old North, but a little bit familiar with some of the other neighborhoods. I know, I know, it's hard, you can't see me, can you? Haven't complained about the seating this meeting, so that was it. I'll mark that on the bingo card. So when, in our design guidelines for Old North specifically, and I believe the other neighborhoods as well, there's the language "should," and there's the language "shall." And so when I looked at these guidelines, it uses "should" a lot. I think I did a Command F search, and it came up with, I don't know, tens, tens of dozens of times. But I did not find the word "shall." I think I found the word "shall" once or twice, and it had nothing to do with specific guidelines. So can, can you speak to that? Like, the whole lingo of "should" and the legality of what the guidelines are saying and how that's interpreted by the Design Review Board members as well as staff when you're applying the guidelines?
Yes, absolutely. So those do, they do not include the word "shall." And I think even more than using the word "should," they use active verbs. So a lot of this, the guidelines start with "adopt," "consolidate," "install," "provide." So they serve as sort of an action-focused guideline for the applicants. And then do, the Design Review Board is able to say, do they adopt, consolidate, install, et cetera, like that? Article 16.5 in the zoning code relates to design review. And so one of the elements there under purpose is, they have six different elements of the stated purpose of the design guidelines, and the Design Review Board can discuss those if needed. And then it says, the design guidelines are intended to be applied in a flexible manner to meet the needs of development while encouraging the design to respect the context of nearby buildings and the streetscapes. They are not, thus not a rigid set of rules, but rather a set of key principles to guide development. The Design Review Board's role is to provide certainty that both immediate surroundings, as well as downtown as a whole, are taken into account with each building project. So there's a lot of room for interpretation there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Councilmember McKenzie, did you want to continue? Or any other council member have questions? Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. So now I want to go back to the fact that there was an open records request, because there, it sounds like there are some allegations that, and you guys can have a, can have a seat. It would probably be the other, the other representative, sir. I can't remember everyone's last name. Because it, it, it sounds, and you can, and please correct me if I'm wrong, sir, that there are some concerns or allegations that the residents feel like that there were people here from the city who were serving as project managers, if you will, that you all feel that there's some type of impropriety. Is, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay, and that was the, excuse me, that was the impetus for the Opens, Open Records Act. And I am kind of blown away at the, the absorbent costs that it, that's, that's referenced there. Don't know if you will, if you're considering pursuing potential litigation or pursuing, maybe looking at scaling back your, your keywords or something to try to get the, the level of information that you're looking for, just so that you're satisfied or comfortable that there's no impropriety from the city perspective. With that said, if, you know, now I'm going to switch back to the law director. In the event that there is a group who states that they are looking to potentially challenge or take legal action, would we go ahead and vote tonight? Would we defer to see what their action would be?
Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McKenzie, no, I, I think I'm satisfied with the discussion here. Councilmember McKenzie, no, I, I think I'm satisfied with the discussion here tonight. You know, like I said earlier, and has been acknowledged by your colleagues, when I found out there was an appeal, I immediately communicated that to everyone, said council would be sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity whenever that appeal, you know, was filed. It was like August 22nd, back when Councilmember Ryder, former Councilmember Testerman, and Vice Mayor Smith met with the developer. There was nothing had been filed to even begin to consider this. There wasn't even a, there wasn't a concept of an appeal. It was just a discussion of something. As council, excuse me, as Vice Mayor Smith mentioned, people got emails from, I think you said, both sides of this. You know, both Vice Mayor Smith, Councilmember Ryder, you know, said tonight that they did not commit to anything when there was the discussion, you know, whatever it was, 16, 18, 24 months ago, and that they were voting impartially tonight. I'm comfortable with this council voting tonight one way or the other.
Councilmember McKenzie, if I could, I just wanted to say that we assiduously respond to all public records requests in the same manner. I did ask my staff to ask Director Brooks how their response, you know, what the nature of their records request was, and it was much, much smaller in scope, and they did actually charge $94 to provide, provide the things they did. Usually what happens is the, you know, the person or entity asking for these records works with our law department to find out exactly what they're looking for so we can, you know, maybe do it in a couple hours instead of a week. But, you know, it's our job also to protect, you know, to, to provide the open records, but also to be good stewards of taxpayer time and resources, which includes staff time for our lawyers and our communication staff. I also just wanted to say that, you know, the allegations that, you know, there's anybody with the city acting as a project manager for this or any other project is completely false and outrageous and not true in any way. Ms. Justice, her job is Chief of Urban Design and Development, so just like council members often listen to and, and work with constituents, Ms. Justice and her staff often take calls and answer questions from people who are considering developments in our city. That's, that's the nature of the job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion on this item? A motion?
I'm going to, motion to deny.
Okay. Motion's been made to deny the appeals, been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of denying the appeal, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to deny carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to file a grant application with the State of Tennessee, Department of the Military, and the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency. And if approved, accept a grant in the amount of $145,000, which will reimburse the Knoxville, Knox County Emergency Management Agency budget for salaries and operating expenses for fiscal year 2025.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Does anybody sign up? No. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated to provide professional engineering consulting services for the East Greenway Drive Bridge Repair Project in an amount not to exceed $70,400.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gresham Smith Incorporated to provide professional engineering consulting services for the Boyd's Bridge Pike Bridge Repair Project in an amount not to exceed $55,995.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Oh. Okay. We have one person signed up to speak in favor of this. Sorry, I didn't see that. Or this is 11C. Oh, she's speaking in opposition. Hannah Freeman. There you are.
Hannah Freeman, 37912. That was a mistake. It should be in favor.
Okay. Did you want to, did you want to take your five minutes?
No.
Okay. That concludes, people signed up to speak to this item? Any further questions or discussion? Seeing, oh.
Very quick question, Mayor. Boyd's Bridge Pike Bridge leads over into the county. I just want to point a clarification, so.
Ms., Mr. Claybo, would Knox County cover half the cost?
Unfortunately, no.
A toll? Should we do a toll for people coming?
Well, maybe next time. I just want to point a clarification. Maybe next time we'll engage them. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, well, anyhow. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville's Community Development Corporation for Phase III infrastructure improvements at Western Heights in an amount not to exceed $4,200,000.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Ms. Freeman signed up to speak on this item. If you want to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes.
Yeah, Hannah Freeman, 37912. Really, I haven't been to city council in a minute now. Was here previously, you know, helping organize tenants for tenants' rights, helping with negotiation of, negotiation with the Tanglewood properties that are now RAN property management. This past year, we've done a lot of outreach. We have worked with the Expanded Legal Aid, hopefully soon to be right to council. And we've also worked with Knox Needs with their mutual aid and Rainbow Library. But I'm here speaking in favor of this, just to say that even though last year we had our fair amount of differences and, I will say, just lack of hope because we didn't see a lot of affordable housing, that has really changed. And I will say, this is a really good thing to see. We are still in a housing crisis. We are still in a rental crisis. I think it's pretty naive to say that that's not totally gone yet, but 180 units in a public housing is fantastic. We need it desperately. The Enskip project that was recently, American Cannon cut that ribbon there, fantastic as well. We need more. It's not a secret. Land doesn't just, you know, obviously tonight, we've talked about zoning all night. Land doesn't just up and come out of nowhere, so. But I think that there is some more we can do as far as incentivizing. Application fees are still very, very high. When we've been doing a lot of outreach, that's, I mean, I've spoken to people that have paid $400, $500, $600, no approval for, you know, a rental property. That is a lot of money to be spending on a no, and to get it continuously, you know, it hurts your, your hope there. And it makes it harder because if you're spending $600 in application fees, right? A typical rental, if we're not talking about like public housing, you're looking at about $1,200, so that's half of your rent. If you're looking at first and last month's rent, you know, that's $2,400. And taking $600 out of, you know, a single mom's pocket that doesn't have it and is just trying to get, you know, find somewhere is strenuous. And that is causing people delays in getting housing. That is causing a lot of what we've been noticing in the outreach, first-time homelessness. It's not exceeding more than a month or so, 90 days from what we're tracking, but at the end of the day, application fees seem like a really small issue, and it is actually a pretty big issue that I haven't seen addressed here a whole lot. That being said, other than that, those miscellaneous fees we've talked about before, housing is happening. So thank you for that. That's really all I came to say tonight. It's late, y'all. Endured a lot tonight, so I appreciate it. I am going to yield my time on public forum, though, just so you know that. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes people who signed up to this. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Freeman, wait. One question. The, the application fee that you're referencing, you're referring to private application fees, right? Not KCDC's or anybody else that's funded by the city in any way?
Yeah, great question. So, yeah, a lot of it is private. I will say, though, as far as the CAC eviction prevention program, some of that money is not covering application fees, which to my understanding it would. However, we're doing interviews right now in a qualitative and a quantitative study to see, in conjunction with the University of Tennessee and what's going on already with expanded council, to see those exact, like, figures and, and that. From what we've understand, understood DK property management, they're actually doing reimbursals now if you get denied. So there is some relief from private property management as well, but they also have some HUD incentivized properties that fall into that. So, but no like Section 8 from what we've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, I just wanted to just celebrate that we've been committed to transforming Western for several years now. Back in 2021, you all approved the city's commitment to this transformation to the tune of $26.5 million to be paid out over six years. So this is our third payment. We are fulfilling our promise to the people of Beaumont and Western Heights. The work has begun. It's looking really good. The neighbors who are there now are really pleased with the progress. And this 4.2 million local dollars will go towards infrastructure development. That includes new streets, sidewalks, curbs, guttering, lighting, installation of utilities, and stormwater drainage. And I would like to just remind everyone that our $26.5 million complements a $40 million grant we got from HUD, plus another $140 million in various sources of financing and investment from other public and private sources to be, I think, over $200 million investment. And this will help support the more than 470 mixed-income households that will soon be at this location, plus a new park, plus the Head Start that's already up and running because education and high-quality childcare is so important. And I'm just really proud of this investment and grateful for KCDC's partnership and HUD's support as well. But 26.5 million is a really big investment for a city our size, and I'm glad we're making our, hopefully improving our third payment tonight. It's already budgeted. You guys are just, you know, considering the, the resolution. Any other questions? Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, Mayor. Very well said. After that, I just want to echo that because that was the points I was going to make. I've got a little bit of special interest in this project because it used to be in my district, and it's still right at the edge of it. So this is really good to see this kind of advance in affordable housing being made. And another shout out to Ben Bentley and his staff, and they did a masterful job about getting the HUD money, which was a competitive process, I'm sure. So anyway, just a little bit of accolades and glad to see this moving forward.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim D to Joseph S. Key II for one parcel of property located at 1209 Forest Avenue, parcel ID number 094LM011 within the limits of the city of Knoxville pursuant to a homemaker's program for a contract sales price of $131,100.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Goodwill Industries Knoxville Incorporated to provide all personnel and supervision necessary to provide recycling, maintenance, customer assistance, and educational services at five area locations throughout the city for an annual contract price not to exceed $218,400.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance to amend the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2425.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and second it. There's one person signed up to speak in opposition to item 12A, Mr. Ruggles, Tom Ruggles. If you could state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Tom Ruggles. I live in Knoxville District 2. Let me start out with giving this its flowers that I found in there. This does do a transfer of $472,000 from the police budget to Safety City. It's always good to see our police budget being decreased and seeing that money going to something that will improve our city. So, you know, hopefully we can continue to do that in the future and put that money to things like land, bread, and housing, things that'll improve people's conditions and actually stop crime at the source, which is poverty. Going back to a couple items, I'm going to be kind of all over the map here. The first one I saw is that this gives a parking technology upgrade. It's giving $150,000 to PBA for parking upgrades resulting from the survey that went out. Just wanted to reiterate that, that survey about parking in the city was sort of the talk of the town for a couple-week period there, and people were very opposed to any new parking fees being made in the downtown as that would be a poor move that would stop people from coming downtown and hurting the downtown economy. So hopefully, these parking upgrades are not something that is going to increase the enforcement and increase the likelihood for increased parking fees and the like. The second point that I wanted to make is that there is $75,000 being allotted for Charter Amendment 2. I was wondering how that is going to be used. That's Charter Amendment 2 on the upcoming election that is going to decide how we elect our city council. I'm not really sure how this money's going to be used. I'm kind of concerned about it, given that the majority of the council members have, you know, supported a resolution that would lean one way on that ballot measure. And so I just want to make sure that however that money is spent, it's not spent in a way that might influence the public to vote yes on issue 2. And then the third issue I saw with this is that there is going to be almost $300,000 given to PBA to take control of park security around the city. And so I'm curious to see what changes this might be bringing about to the way that security is dealt with in the parks in our city, because this is a big concern to me because it's my understanding that the unhoused community is the folks who are largely the subject of the security being enforced in the parks. And so we need to develop a way that, you know, we can mitigate policing the unhoused folks because they don't have other places to go. And so hopefully, by PBA taking this, we can put that in place in ways that maybe we couldn't when there was private security being hired to do it, because we deserve to be doing all that we can to try to support our unhoused folks. And one of the best ways that we can do that is to stop policing them, stop harassing them, stop taking their shit away, and the like. Let's see, is there anything else? I think that's it. So, yeah, my opposition to this was the concern with the parking technology, with the $75,000 being, going to the education of the public on Charter Amendment 2, and the nearly $300,000 going to PBA for security. Of course, there is no housing... Of course, there is no housing on this budget, so, yeah, I remember last year you all as a body decided to put in writing that we were in a housing crisis. And so this is a budget item that does not have housing in it. If we're in a housing crisis, we ought to be having housing items in as many of our budgetary options as possible. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, that concludes the people signed up to speak to this. Counselmember Housley?
Yeah, I'll take the bite. Who can tell me what the 40 grants were for the Charter Amendment?
It's.
Seventy-five.
It's the invoice from the Election Commission.
The money, Boy Seven CFO for the city, the money for the Charter Amendment is simply what we're paying the, Chris Davis gave me the estimate on that. And as I understand it, that goes, that's at the high end. We may not need to use it all, but it's in case you had to go to somehow two pages and getting that out there and everything. He was concerned that it might do that. He was hoping it could be one, that was if there was two, and they have to get out there and run the mechanics of it. That's all it is. And he's been real good in the past of obviously telling us if he didn't have enough money for the election, but also if he doesn't spend it all, letting us know. And so, yeah, that's the mechanics of getting it on there. No, no advocacy whatsoever.
No, I figured it was for the Election Commission. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick things. One is, we are having a parking workshop on November 7th, and the public is invited to attend where we will discuss and review the study and recommendations and deliberate next steps. Second is, I know, I noticed in this is a much-needed funding for urgent study and design for Gay Street. Mayor, would you, maybe when I pause, maybe if you could then, before I run out of time, give an update on what's ahead for that?
Yeah. First, I'm sure I join councilmembers in wanting to fix and reopen Gay Street Bridge as soon as possible. As soon as possible is not as soon as any of us would like. So this funding, that's part of the budget amendment, would go towards hiring a consulting engineering firm to help us identify what the repairs are and design them. And then, you know, and then we need to know how much it costs. I mean, it's, depending on the nature of the costs, I mean, we're talking, you know, more than, more than what's on here. This is just for the design and analysis.
So this will produce a sticker price of what it takes to fix it?
Yep. And then once we have that, we'll be coming back to counsel to that and maybe seeking support from TDOT and.
And with a couple, with another minute left, Mr. Rosenberg, it's important that we not, there's a lot of different unintended consequences of the bridge being closed, none of it's caused by us, but, you know, we don't need to wait until this grand solution is fixed. And so there's a number of ideas from the, particularly from the First District, have been brought to me, and I'm sure you all have received them all as well, but there are a number of quick fixes that are going to help relieve congestion on the south side of the river. And, Mr. Rosenberg, you all have already activated a few of those. Would you list off three or four of those that you all have either requested or initiated or started?
Sure, Vice Mayor. Grant Rosenberg, COO. We have added some bus stops on Blunt Avenue and just changed some routes. The closure of the Gay Street Bridge actually has had a really big impact on our cat-reimagined routes, so that's been a, that's probably been our biggest pain point in terms of city operations. We've also adjusted all the light signals along either end of Gay Street and adjusted the signals on the timing along, on Henley at Blunt. And we've asked TDOT, and there's been a petition circulating around as well about this, but to allow some delineators and more of a buffer for the bike, bike and pedestrian routes on Henley Bridge, because we've obviously shut down Gay Street to pedestrians as well and bike routes. There's really not allowed good alternates for those, those folks. So those are some of the, some of the changes we've implemented, and we're going to continue to monitor. I mean, obviously, long, there's a lot of long-term fixes we're looking at that we need, we need that will mitigate the impact of the Gay Street Bridge. For example, ATMS on Chapman Highway, you know, that's a, it's again, not something that's going to happen quickly, but we want to accelerate that as much as we can because that will relieve a lot of the challenges.
As you all make changes, I would just ask you to continue to communicate to the public. Those are real. People will see the changes. There's been kind of pent-up congestion, and you guys are fixing them fast, so you're not waiting until the full solution is, is there.
Oh, the other thing, scooter, you mentioned the scooters. It was something you'd asked about, actually. We had made that change. We changed the geofencing to allow micromobility on the bridge, the scooters on the bridge.
Yeah. Counselmember Thomas will be happy to know he can ride a scooter across in the street now. I would like to add, my closing seconds here, it's brought to my attention that one of the items, the clerical error related to the 1.15 million is not in Section One of this ordinance. So, Mr. Johnson, I think I've given you an excerpt that I would like to add as the final bullet of that Section One. Would you please quickly read that?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Corrects the fiscal year 2324 Budget Ordinance Amendment O-1-2024, approved on January 9, 2024, to reflect the correct increase to the capital budget for the property acquisition and design for the Burlington Fire Station. Specifically, the previous Budget Ordinance Amendment listed a dollar amount of $1,150,000 due to a typographical error. This Budget Ordinance Amendment corrects that error by stating the correct dollar amount of $1,150,000.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to add that.
A motion to amend.
Excuse me, a motion to amend the ordinance to include that excerpt.
Okay, a motion. Does everyone understand the amendments been made and seconded? Is there any discussion?
Unless somebody's really tied to the, tied to the billion-dollar fire station. We need to.
Chief Sharp might like that. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. Unless there's more discussion on the amendment, we'll vote on that, and then I'll go to Ms. Parker. Oh, do you have a question about the amendment?
I do. It's on the, that language is on this agenda item.
This was yet a different typo, I believe. Mr. Evans, can you explain it to Ms. Parker?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Councilwoman Parker, you'll find it in the AIS, and you'll find it in the whereas clause at the end of the actual Budget Ordinance Amendment. But when you get into what Will Johnson and I were telling, the enactment section, Section One, you won't find that in there. And that's why this amendment to the amendment is being brought forward. This is.
So we fixed the typo in two, but two of the three, and this would fix three of the three.
This puts it where it absolutely has to be. This is my finest hour, by the way.
Ms. Parker, does that answer your question about the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions or comments about the amendment before you? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now we're back. Our motion to amend carries. Now we're back to the original motion to approve as amended. Counselmember Parker?
I was wanting to make a motion to divide the question. Didn't know if that was possible to make as a substitute motion.
Mr. Frost?
A motion, I'm sorry. A motion to divide the question would be proper. You would need a second pass.
Okay. I'd like to make such a motion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson, how would you like to divide the question? For example, do you want everyone, everything voted on individually?
Everything voted on individually, yes, please. I think there's 15 items.
So the motion, can, can you repeat? The motion is to.
Divide the question into each individual item.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion? Seeing none, a motion fails for lack of a second.
I expected that.
Okay. Now back to the motion before you. As amended, any further questions or discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you. I'm not able to support this budget amendment, and I've expressed this every time we've had a budget amendment, and I've expressed it with the administration. In my recent meeting with the administration, I was informed that it's my, it's the preference of my colleagues that we get these massive budget amendments at least four times a year. It's not my preference. I got used to Jim York's way of doing it, where this is not, it's, I cannot do my best decision-making under this process when I don't have a total picture of what's going on. I don't think that we give proper, a proper transparent process to the public when we make such massive decisions. 3.2 million being added to the capital budget just through this vote outside of that budget process. And as I've said before, I would actually like our budget process to be even more participatory than it currently is. And so that's one reason I wanted to divide the question, because there are some items that I can, that I can support as needing a more urgent response outside of that budget process, the Gay Street Bridge repairs being one of them, but I'm not able to support all of the items that were piled into this budget amendment request.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-one.
12B is an ordinance to close an unimproved and unnamed alley from former McCarty Avenue to Baldwin Avenue within City Block 25373 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's First District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance to close an, to close unimproved Dooley Street from former McCarty Avenue to Baldwin Avenue within City Block 25373 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's First District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselmembers?
Is that it? That's the last one.
The one person who'd signed up for public forum left and told us she was leaving, so without objection, this meeting is adjourned.